Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. It's 5:00 PM and we're going to call our regular scheduled meeting to order. Please join us in doing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Here's please see the roll.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbering.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here. Everybody is here. Are there any changes to the agenda before I ask for approval?
I am.
Any good councilmembers having something to say? With that, I look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move. Second.
Okay. Any other questions? Danny?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
And Dean?
Yes.
Okay, next we had our public input period, and I just want to remind everybody that we are going to be having a public hearing for the airport and the Hildebrand development during our public hearings. So we'll be taking information during that time if that's what you're planning to speak to during public input. But during this, please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, but the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under Iowa open meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on anything? Hope everybody can hear us in the back. Am I speaking loud enough? I'm not. I will try to speak louder. Okay, sorry. When we do the public hearings, we will be talking all about the airport project and the Hildebrand development. We have two publics. Yep, exactly. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Sometimes people don't understand that, so I was just trying to make sure everybody was clear on that, okay?
Is there any more standing room in here though? Oh, always. Well, can we maybe fill in that behind?
There's one over here, maybe just a little bit over here. Yeah, you can come around here if you want.
Come around behind us over here.
I've got one chair left over here if somebody needs to sit. There's standing room space over here. Yeah, you just had a new kneecap.
I can stand.
You can stand up. You're good. Okay. All right, does that help a little bit?
You can.
Okay. Is there any other public input before I close this? Right here, now I'm going to close the public input period. Next, we have our consent agenda. I need a motion and a second. Oh, got read through them. Duh, sorry. I got off kilter here. Okay. Consent agenda. Item number one, we need approval of the minutes for the September 11th regular council meeting. Next, I need a motion to approve Resolution 79 approving the bills. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports from the library, P and Z, our activity reports and fund balances reports. Next item is a liquor license for cork and bottle. It's a renewal. Our next item is I need a motion to approve incentive grant payment request, and this is to my, it's called Milestones Group. It was for their facade for $7,500. Our next item is a motion to approve Resolution 80, and that's amending the salary. I believe we have a library person who has reached one year and we have a new part-time person with City Parks. Our next item is I need a motion to approve two digital speed signs from MPH Industries for 8338, and that would be covered by a $10,000 grant that Chad Wright obtained for us. And that is our last item, so I would entertain a motion and a second so we can have discussion.
Sounds like it, Bill.
Any questions before we proceed? Hearing none? Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
And Dean?
Yes.
All right. We've now reached our public hearing portion. It is 5:06, and I'm opening the public hearing on the city's intent to commence an improvement project for the Manchester Municipal Airport. We are going to take public input on this. We're here, you know, I'm so glad there's so many people here because we're going to be able to share correct information and get some ideas and everything. Just want to let you know that I've been talking to Todd and we're trying, we really like to have some kind of way that we can work something out together and just so everybody understands how the airport started, what the vision was for it, and where we are, and that we can maybe come to a resolution that all works for everybody. Because in the end, we are all neighbors and we all want something that's best for all of us. So, who would like to start?
Okay. My name's Todd Loker.
Yes, please state your name and.
202 Second Avenue Northwest, Farley, Iowa, and I'm here to represent Todd and Rachel, or I'm sorry, Todd and Angela. And they are obviously targets of condemnation for this project if it does move forward. And I wanted to address their concerns and what barriers you're going to have with respect to this project. First of all, I want to talk a little bit about some of the airport statistics. There's a national plan of integrated airport systems that has information regarding the airport. It lists Manchester with zero in-plane passengers and 10-based aircraft. In-plane passengers just means there's no passenger flights. With respect to qualifications for FAA money, Manchester Airport needs to be qualified as a basic airport, which means that it has to have 10 or more validated based aircraft or four or more based helicopters. Airnav.com lists seven airplanes based here. Mr. Summers' count is five airplanes if you count one of them that's not airworthy right now. But NPIAS, which is the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, states that the aircraft has, it has to be a single-engine, multi-engine jet or helicopter that's reported by the airport and verified through the end number registry, and that military aircraft, ultralights, gliders, and balloons can't be counted for that. So we do have a question whether you've got the 10 aircraft to qualify for grants. And we're definitely going to be making inquiry with the city and the FAA to make sure that those i's are dotted and t's are crossed. The other thing that we wanted to make clear to the city before they vote on this is that the Summers do not want this project or not interested in the project, and they will take every legal opportunity to challenge this in court. The first challenge will be whether taking the Summers' land for an airport expansion that serves so few people, whether that's really a legitimate public purpose. The other thing that we plan to attack is whether the plan to take over 40 acres of the Summers' land is the minimum amount necessary for making this public purpose happen. And the burden is on the city to prove those things, and we will be making the city meet that burden in court. The second thing I wanted to talk about is if the city can clear the hurdles of whether there's a legitimate public purpose for expanding such a small airport, and whether they're justified in taking the amount of land that they plan to take, is this really going to cost quite a bit of money? One thing that, one thing that I don't think's been considered in the previous appraisals that I've seen is that this land is subject to a 20-year sand mining lease with Bruning Rock Products. And Mr. Summers has estimated between Bruning and his family, they spent $1 million to develop a quarry site already. That includes, you know, geologists had to take measurements to determine whether it's quarryable sand and whether it's appropriate for manufacturing concrete. That's been done. Several acres of soil has been stripped in preparation for the quarry activities. Watering activities have taken place, so the dredges can operate on the property. A scale has been installed. There's going to be, not only do you have to acquire the land, you're going to have to acquire Bruning's interest, and they've got a lot of saleable concrete sand. And you're going to have to buy Summers' interests out, the royalties that they will expect from selling all of that sand. The other thing that's developed too on this site is Mr. Summers has measured two to eight feet of peat moss as part of the topsoil that's covering this area, and they've stockpiled a very large soil pile where it can be sold for topsoil purposes. Todd estimates that if he doesn't screen the soil, he's got about $500,000 of revenue in the one stockpile for that. And he also bought a screening plant so that he can screen that soil. He estimates there's probably a million and a half dollars worth of the stockpile soil if it's screened. And he also estimates based on what hasn't been stripped, that will be stripped for the pouring activity, there's three times more of that soil available with stockpile and sell in the future if he's allowed to do that. All of which is going to be part of our plan for compensation. So this isn't a $480,000 acquisition. This is going to be multiples of that amount. And the thing that I would like to conclude with is, you know, some of the cost estimates that I had seen in January was $2.7 million with inflation and final design that impact that number as a preliminary cost estimate. Well, if the city's penciled in $480,000 for land acquisition for the Summers, that's not even, I don't even know if the 2.7 is going to get it done. And I just don't think, you know, when you look at what the benefit is going to be from this project, I don't think the city or Manchester's taxpayers are going to be excited about the city spending several million dollars to expand an airport that serves five airplanes. So a handful of wealthy folks can enjoy private aviation. It just doesn't seem to be a wise use of funds when it could be done. Projects could be done that would serve.
Thank you. Thank you. Be behind me, everybody here. Is there somebody else who would like to speak? Yes.
Evening, my name is Nathan Peterson. 315 here at the Ohio City, Iowa, from Manchester. I'm an attorney, I represent the Offerman, it's Captain Mary Offerman, like Mr. Loker and Mr. Summers. The Offerman's property is on the chopping block as well, should this project proceed. At least a portion of the property. I'm not going to belabor the points made by Mr. Loker, but I have to say in my conversations with the Offermans and my conversations with Mr. Summers in my review of all the materials that I've been providing so far, I'm at a loss to understand why we're here. And I know why I'm here, and I know why the Offermans are here, but I'm not really sure why we, the body here and the public here, have come here to discuss the project, the benefit of which is hazy at best. I'm like Mr. Loker, I'm curious about the actual public use, public use that this airport is going to provide. I'm curious about the economic benefit and real numbers, not numbers that apply generally to the state of Iowa aviation as a whole, but the city of Manchester, the people of Manchester, the voters of Manchester, the taxpayers of Manchester, what benefit that provides them. And then the act of that clearly defined benefit, how do you justify the very extreme cost that this is going to take? Mr. Loker has articulated some numbers. I'm not going to get into the numbers. The Offermans are not instructionists. They're not unwilling to cooperate should the cost, excuse me, should the benefits outweigh the costs. But we know what the costs are going to be. Just compensation, that's what the law requires for taking just compensation. And the Offermans aren't going anywhere without just compensation. Without just compensation and the absence of a clearly defined benefit, I don't see how this body can move forward on this project. And that's just the Offermans. That's nothing to do with, Mr. Summers, that's have nothing to do with the other property owners involved. Those things are going to add up quickly, I think, for this council, for the city, for the taxpayers. Borrowed a taxpayer in this town. Our voter here, I'd want to know in specific terms what this is going to, what benefit is going to accrue to them as a result of this project, and why it requires kicking Offermans off forces of the land that they've done for years. And they can talk to you more about their emotional attachments to the land, that they have a very real cognizable property interest there, and to take it without a clearly defined benefit, it's going to cost the city a lot, and we're preparing to make the city pay that much. Like Mr. Loker said, and you know, if it comes down to it, we'll go to the board jury and we'll have to have them determine what just compensation is. But unless until this body offers just compensation, the Offermans aren't going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Michael, 1883 Highway 13, which means we do not live in the city limits. However, we do own property in the city limits. We have this here our whole lives. And I don't intend to be an attorney, but I'm a person that asks questions. I just handed the council a list of 10 questions that I came up with. You can't tell I don't like her speaking, but these are just some that I came up with, and also it has been mentioned to me, what kind of firefighter training are we having? And what about a noise ordinance? I'm just going to briefly let these people know what is on your sheet. Why is the land you're wanting to purchase not purchased when it was put up for sale a few years back? My second question, what constitutes the greater good? Why does one small group take precedent over a larger group of differing opinions? How is it to be funded? And I see that was pretty well answered in the flyer that you guys left out there. What's your justification for the expansion? What new businesses have located in Manchester who are in need of an improved airport? Who's wanting to fly into the airport? What type of planes are wanting to land here? How often are they contributing to the cost? What will be the return of the investment on upgrading our airport? What staffing will need to be put in place 24/7, such as their traffic controllers? What budget will this come out of? What type of fuel will these other planes require? Do we have that on-site now? What expenses will be incurred for providing that? And that's where the fire department ties in. Are they going to get additional training for handling these other fuels? Or even for the fuel that we have for the systems that come in now? How much of an impact will the extended runway area have on the city budget for additional lawn care and snow removal? And are you wanting to extend the runway over the creek to the north? Have you gotten permission from the property authorities? And how is this going to be accomplished? And these are just some that I pulled up. I'm the person that asks questions.
That's good. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Ask it.
Zach Brown, 2034 145th Avenue. As far as spanning the creek itself, do we have plans on how we're going to go about going over the creek? Or are we re-robbing the creek itself? I live upstream, and any deviation in that creek causes my house to flood. So is the city, after they put this in, are they responsible for my house flooding if it causes backs, if it backs up, using culverts or anything else?
Is your house flooded?
No, it doesn't. It hasn't passed when things have stopped, but it is no longer in a flood plain. And it's been taken out, and, but if there are culverts, there's a lot of debris that comes through there.
The crossing of that creek would require engineering and hydraulic studies to be done or approached to make sure we do not back it up.
So the site hasn't been done yet?
Nope.
Any estimates on cost? Sorry.
Will that go through the Army Corps of Engineers or?
It will have to go through the procedures, whether Army Corps of Engineers is required because of the size of the waterway or not. I can't answer that specifically. We'll check with them to verify if they have to review it, they will review it. If not, we'll still have to do our hydraulic studies, still go through the DNR. We still have to do a flood plain permit or through those routes.
Yes. Please state your name and address.
Here in Hutchinson, 209 South. I've lived here all my life, grew up here. Good, bad, or endeavor. Seen Manchester stay the same size as I. From what I was told, when this project is done, if it goes forward, it's not going to be any bigger than Independence or Monticello. It's going to be smaller yet. So there's not, to me, makes no sense to do it. And if we're not going to have 100 planes here a year, I don't see any purpose for it either. And I just want to reiterate, you know, taking something from someone has consequences down the line. And I just hope that everyone thinks that through very carefully.
Thank you.
I have something to say. Debbie Powers, 1004 Franklin. I mean, our domain is just fancy words for that. You're all willing to steal from the people who are in this community. You are no better than big government. You're actually appalling. It is disgusting that you're willing to do this to these people who have worked their butts off for years to have this land. I'm disappointed and ashamed, and each one of you have voted for this. If it's true that you guys held a meeting and already made your decision, because that's the rumor going around town.
That is not true.
I can't tell you, but I believe you, because I don't.
Well, it's not true. That's why.
If that's true, that adds to the shame, I feel. You guys are supposed to work for us. You're working against us. The people that are coming on those planes, they don't live here. Their kids don't grow up here, and who are they bringing? With the way the world is, I don't want people coming in from out of town that I don't know, big or small. I want to protect my kids and my grandkids. And you guys not doing that, not a one of you who vote for this. Not a single one. And you guys should be ashamed for doing this to our community, for stealing from these people.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Joe Ditterick.
Thank you, Joe.
South Wayne Street. I've done some research on this. So we're discussing expanding this for FFA or FAA for charter flights, correct?
No, just minimum general aviation.
So the minimum general aviation, 25 miles from here is Independence. They have an airport that's large enough to support what you guys are trying to do. You have Monticello, which is 23 miles away. That airport as well supports what you guys are trying to do. We don't have to do this here in our town. It does not gain anything for us. And like Jeff Bogdan always said, this town is not going to live or die by a better airport. Unfortunately, he's not here to be able to say what he wants to say. But there's a lot of this. You guys are coming out here, like Debbie said, and you're going to try and steal land. You guys got to remember, you're here to, you're serving us. We don't serve you. You guys got voted into the city council because of us. Just remember that when you guys make your vote. We talked about stealing people's land.
You ready? Else?
Joe Powers, 1004 on Franklin Street, Manchester. 20 years ago, I was forced to live up here by my mom. Since then, I've grown to know most of the people in here. I've been over for a lot of the people in here. I've worked for some of the people in here. I went to high school with some of these guys in here. My kids are being raised with these families. These families have worked their butt off to purchase, to own, to mitigate the land that's there. Why, why would, why would a city as small as we are try to take that away from them? We've, we're not that kind of people. It's why I decided to stay here. That's why I raised my family. That's why my wife's here. You know, we work for what we own. Why, why would we go in and try and take it from somebody that, and for something that's so miniscule that we don't need anywhere? There's no reason for it. There's no charter flights, obviously. It's minimum aviation. So there's no traveling except for people who can afford the plane to take off and land. I can't do that. I know a lot of the people in here can't do that. Nor would I want to, but we really need to sit down and think about what we're doing here, people, before we make a decision and ruin some people's lives. These are good people, good, honest, working people. That's what built this town. My family part of it 100 years back. Think about what we're doing here before we do it. Really think about it. You're stealing from the people who built this city.
Thank you. Yes.
Kevin Offerman, 1569.
She forgot where he lives.
I think, looking, I think the Manchester Airport community has a want and a need. They want a bigger airport, but do they really need a bigger airport? And I think all of us can relate to our wants and needs. And I just feel that's what is kind of shifting this toward the want than a need to fulfill what the community needs. And I've been with my wife for 35 years, and I got to know my in-laws. We're third generations now. And you guys don't come and take it. Just take it because you want things right. And so we see my daughter and my pretty kids here, we want to take it. What does that do? So we are not going across this.
Any else want to speak?
I will.
Okay, yes, name please.
Spencer Andy Orange.
Address?
2645 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
I live just out past the airport. From my point of view, I work in an industry that's involved in aviation, five-part air ambulance. I do own a plane as well. Cessna 172, Canada. And it's happy to fly into Manchester the way, the way it's sized right now. And I just, I look at the figures here and, and I claim the benefits, and I, I guess from a dapper in aviation, I just don't see how that actually carries over to your life, to the community, especially when you have what's at stake.
Thank you. Okay, yeah.
Michael Feliciano, I live at 460 South Brewer Street. I'm 20-year Navy veteran, aircraft firefighter. That was part of my job. I've talked to a few people that have said that most of the firefighters that work here in town are volunteers. I don't know if they're regularly paid or not, but do they actually have the training? Do they know what they're doing and how to handle themselves with the aircraft? Jet fuel, the 100 low lead that you have out there at the airport, do you have the capacity of the trucks to be able to handle if something happened? I've dealt with aircraft fires. I know about them. So if they don't have the training, you're going to span that airport to do what you need to do, and something happens, that's, that's, a lot of, a lot of stuff that can happen with that. Not just people environmentally, the fuel, the liquids of the aircraft contain, the materials that they're made out of. There's a lot of things that have to be brought into this. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah.
Donna Meyer, 1340 1972, I live out by the airport. Yeah. Okay, I heard that you guys want to bring this airport in for businesses that are in town. And I worked at Henderson's for 35 years. And I know for a fact that there's no way Henderson's will ever fly into Manchester. They always, if they're going to fly, they fly into Dubu or they drive to Dubu. And at night for supper, they go back to Dubu for the bigger restaurants. They stay in Dubu for the bigger hotels. And so this airport will not accommodate. And so this airport will not accommodate them at all, or help Henderson's at all. And I know, like Collins, you know, and I'm forty five minutes away, they're not going to fly and see Manchester. They're going to stay and see the rapids also because of the hotels and the restaurants.
Thanks, Donna.
In response to Henderson's, guy by the name of Julian Teal.
Yes.
Turned Henderson's around because he flew into Manchester frequently from Indiana. And ended up living here and using this airport for Henderson manufacturing.
Yeah, can you give your name and address? Can you give your name and address, please? Thank you, Tim.
Pat Schmitz, nineteen ninety four, two hundred and forty eighth Avenue, Manchester. Listen to everything everybody said, and I would like to add a little bit and tell you that it's not our goal to take anyone's land.
Could you sneak up a little bit, Pat, please? Thank you.
Focus is not to take people's land, the focus is to purchase people's land that. Lies in the pathway of the airport, which has been there since the nineteen fifties. But I will start by saying. I've been an airport board member since moving here in two thousand and five, when I constructed one of the first new aircraft hangars at Manchester. Prior to this, I owned an aircraft and maintained it in Independence and Monticello, so I'm well aware of what they have in those facilities. And the challenges that we have had here, because we don't have some of the facility amenities and the safety factors that they do have. If you haven't had a chance to review the handout this evening, I want to make sure to encourage you to take a chance to look at it, read it. If there's not enough to go around and you didn't get one, please give one of us your email address or your cell number after this meeting, and we will make sure you get one after tonight's session. As with many things, there are always information and misinformation floating around. And we put that package together to help provide some facts around the process that we have been working on since two thousand and five. At that time, the airport was solely one hundred percent funded by the city's general fund budget. And some occasional Iowa D O T grants. We began at that time, a long application process in two thousand and five. By conducting an A L P or Airport Layout Plan. And moving through the arduous process defined by the F A A to apply for an opportunity. To become an F A A NIPUS Airport. NIPUS, as the attorney said before, stands for National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. In the United States, it is vital that we have a national highway infrastructure for transportation and to help stimulate inter and interstate activity. That's why we have the wonderful system of interstates that we have in this country. Many don't realize that this is also a vital infrastructure in the event of a national disaster, war or otherwise. Airports across the U S are also considered a similar strategic asset for economic disaster systems and, you know, unfortunately, war activity. For this reason, the F A A has created the unusually generous program. Where they contribute a ninety ten match for any funding that Manchester would invest. Because airports across the United States are considered a vital act, act, asset for those services. This allows us to begin receiving additional funding under a ninety ten federal match program to help Manchester. Support the airport and reduce the overall burden today on the city's fiscal budget for the airport. As of twenty seventeen, twelve years after embarking on that process. We succeeded in being admitted to the federal NIPUS airport system, we are now part of that system. This was a huge win economically for Delaware County and for the city of Manchester. The F A A believes so much in a strong national airport system that they are willing to invest nine dollars for every one dollar we invest locally in this community. I challenge everyone in this room, everyone, to find any other public infrastructure or utility where you get a tenfold return on your investment. Nobody else is stepping forward offering ten X for this community or a project of this type, nobody. The airport money comes from fuel taxes on the aviation fuel. Doesn't come from your taxes, it comes from our taxes that we pay on fuel. And it comes from across the country. That fuel tax is funneled into small communities like this one because they want us to have safer runways that are better maintained. Because they know it strengthens our national infrastructure and most importantly, it helps fuel. The economy. Needs community, it's good for them because it's great for us. As a community, we can choose to take advantage of this NIPUS ten X investment match and use that money to grow the infrastructure which supports this town. Whether you use it or not. Or you can reuse it and go back to the days when Manchester pays a hundred percent of the cost themselves. Either way, that money is still being collected on aviation fuel at airports across the United States, whether you take it or not. It's just going to go somewhere else like Independence or Monticello. The F A's NIPUS program has already provided nearly six hundred thousand in federal investments to this community from airport, airport fuel taxes. And currently has a higher budget for seven or eight million dollars to invest in this community. I know there is some perception that airports are for the wealthy. This could not be further from the truth, an aircraft is a business tool for many. It's no different than a contractor who purchases a backhoe, you can dig your holes with a shovel. It's. Or a farmer who plants with a twenty four row planter, all of these things can be accomplished with less. Yet they realize these investments return dividends and efficiency over and over again. A safe airport is a means to more efficient transportation, one which we believe will help attract more business investment in the community. It's one of the top three selection criterias in most industrial and business site selections for business searching for communities to expand. I would argue that this runway is not for us. I already have a plane and a hangar here, I've had one here for eighteen years. While it's not ideal at times without an instrument approach, it's better than nothing. But you need to realize that this expansion is for you. We need it in the overall economic development efforts for this community because the people that fly here. And into this economic zone, they help build industry. Those industries create jobs which employ people, those people buy homes, they buy cars. They shop and buy goods and services here, their children attend the schools here. Those opportunities pay back dividends in this community over and over again, making this community stronger and better every day. As a community, we need to move forward creating broader opportunities for employment. Or our youth will simply graduate and leave this town to take opportunities elsewhere. What do you envision for Manchester and Delaware County, a place to grow and prosper? Or do we strangle these opportunities because we're afraid to invest here? So let me leave you with these final thoughts. We don't question the value of our country, county, or interstate road systems. We universally accept that these utilities are critical to our community for access to goods, services, healthcare in the world. Yet these projects require investment, expansion, and sometimes land too. An airport is no different, except that we need one mile of runway to access anywhere. One mile of runway to receive anyone from anywhere. While a mile of roadway only gets you one mile down the road. So. I leave it with you that we believe that this investment is good for this community, we're not trying to take people's land. It's just an opportunity to incrementally grow the runway to meet the minimum federal spec, which is ten feet wider and four hundred feet longer. Thank you.
Yes.
Stephanie Hutchinson, I live at two oh nine South Fifth Street. I can't say what other people have said here, I did not grow up in this town. Imported, as you would say. But I have been here for twenty years, I raised my children in this community, and I just have one question. If they don't want to sell their land, why don't you build it somewhere else?
Yes, Joe.
Joe Ditterick, one twelve South Wayne Street. So when we're talking numbers and figures about what it's going to take to get this, and the federal government's going to give us tenfold this investment, are they? Taking into effect what it's going to take to get this land from these people? The extra firefighter training that I'm sure they don't have the proper training for the, what you guys are trying to do. We don't even know what that break on the backside is going to do. We don't know, we core of engineers are going to affect another person's property upstream. Are we taking all those numbers into configuration? Or is it just going to be another deal like across the street where we buy something and then we move our ass on it? I can't run my checkbook, but you guys don't say checkbook.
Do we have any?
Actually, I want to address a couple of things on that.
Yeah.
So under the ninety ten match. Today, they gave us a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars annually from the NIPUS program. That's a fund, again, that comes from the fuel set sales tax. And currently, we're also getting an additional hundred and thirty thousand, hundred and ten thousand, hundred and ten. That will go through twenty twenty five, but that funding goes to purchase things like firefighter equipment, like training. So yes, that can be part of the capital investment of, of the ongoing. If you look at other airports, O line, for example, they have used some of their federal match money to buy snow removal equipment, lawn care equipment. The thing is, it offsets ninety percent of the cost that we would do on these things anyway. Today, they are providing firefighter protection force, and we have done training for them at the facilities out there. We do use J A today and hundred low lead, so both are out there anyway. And as it goes to the land pieces of this, when we started the process in two thousand and five, and I'm speaking Todd to you specifically. We asked for them to go to the northwest, we wanted to go that way because we felt that that was the only way we could do it. We didn't think going across the creek was the right way to do it. They were the ones that came back to us and said, no, this is the way we want you to do it. Because we feel that that takes the least amount of farmland out of production. And that they felt that the engineering study and the process of bridging across that creek was of minimal impact. And a structure would be constructed that would be set up for minimal impact in that sense. But that was their choice, that wasn't what we asked for. So at that point in time, in earnest, we, we thought we were making the choice that did impact everyone less. But ultimately, it, you know, it's their process that we're following, they set the, the guidelines for that. And we're simply trying to meet the requirements for the minimum standard that they have, which is. And as far as aircraft are concerned, in basing aircraft, airfields everywhere repeatedly go up and down the base aircraft. Sometimes we have more, sometimes we have less, but I will tell you that we have numerous aircraft right now that are on a wait list to get here. We don't have the hangar facilities for them, and some of the hangars we have are empty because people hold them that don't have any aircraft in them. So part of this process is to construct hangars to allow those people, we have more aircraft in Delaware County than they have in Dubuque, than in Buchanan County as an example. But they're all based in other places because they don't have a spot here. I was based somewhere else because we didn't have a spot, I just chose to build my own hangar. But that's just part of the process, it takes time to do that, and, and I think when there was interest on Mr. Gerhart's to sell the property to us. It takes years to get that approved through the F A A process, and I just don't think he was able to wait that long, so. So that's the process, nobody's trying to take anyone's land, and we've had. Five or six public hearings, five or six landlord hearings over the last seventeen years. Everybody that's been around this field has known that this was in the process of happening. You knew it, I mean, you're a pilot, right? So when you purchased the property from Mr. Gerhart, you even have a clause in your contract with him that says you'll pay him anything you get over and above that, right? Okay, so you knew, but that was something that we were trying to accomplish for this community, we're not trying to hurt you.
But it also know that when you guys did, you wanted twenty acres, now you want forty four.
Well, I, I don't know what the acreage is, but if you look at the.
It's not for sale. Did it cost me a million dollars like this, I don't care, it's not for sale.
Can I ask a couple more questions, Chris McDull, eighteen eighty during that week thirteen? On this, that I haven't heard much about, possibility of moving it someplace else, first of all, how old is the runway that's there?
How old?
Yes.
It's.
It's fifty, fifty plus years.
Okay, so at what point is that life expectancy of that airport runway that's there now not feasible anymore?
We're getting close to the point now where we need to update the lights along the runway and update the runway surface.
Okay, to upgrade it, so. You have checked into what that would be?
No, we have not checked in, I don't have final numbers, I don't have numbers I want to spell tonight that people hold me to because they are subject to change.
How soon are we looking at that need to be done, Tim?
Probably next five years.
Next five years, there we go, okay. So, next question, this money that you're getting in the ninety percent match. Is that usable for a different location and building a completely new airport?
Only if the F A A wants to.
Okay, so you would have to have their permission to do that.
And you should have to have willing landowners to sell that much land because, and as we talked about, it's like four thousand feet. That's pretty close to a mile when you start figuring out the light slopes, so that's multiple people again.
Multiple people again.
There, there's one other factor in this too, for the NIPUS program to work, the, the airports that are NIPUS must be at thirty, they must be thirty minutes, this is their verification. Not ours, thirty minutes from any of the other NIPUS airports. That's why Dyersville doesn't have one because they don't meet that test. Manchester does, and I think you'll find that even Dyersville is supportive of this project because they are, yeah, because there are advantages to them. Well, most of the industrial development that you see in Dyersville, it's in Delaware County, and Delaware County, County gets the tax revenue from it.
Are independents in Monticello getting that done, Tim?
Yeah, they get the same ninety ten.
I thought you just said that.
There, they are, they are thirty minutes, a thirty minute drive.
Thirty minute drive.
Correct, from another NIPUS airport. And so that is the basis of that, and that, that process was vetted by the F A A in twenty, well, way back in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, when we were admitted. You know, it's a very big deal for this community to be in that, without it, we pay a hundred percent of the cost to support the airport with it, we pay ten.
So I would like to say that I would encourage the council to look at a fully different location. That's, and you could find one landlord that owns a mile stretch.
The question is, is the. NIPUS, they're going to take all the money that they've invested in this already and just up and move it, and then that. Then we won't have probably an airport.
But it's not right to just go in and take their.
No, we don't, we want to come to a way to talk, and that's why we're having a public hearing, and I do want to address one thing. There was not ever a meeting where we decided to just do this. We've been trying, I'm so glad these people are here tonight because we've been trying to come to the table to talk for a long time. And, and we're here, and so I'm glad, and I, I want this dialogue to go so everybody has the same education. On really how everything has come to this type right now, instead of just by hearsay, so we have the parties involved, and I appreciate that. Um, one second, he had to hand up one moment first, can you say your name and address?
Todd's neighbor upstream. Manchester does not get the revenue from Dyersville expansion, that is in their KIF district, and I believe they keep that money. Just the one problem, you wouldn't know, Jim.
They have re-bated agreements for a certain number of years, and after that, it does get released. So it's no different than any other economic development project where they do it for a limited time, whether it's ten years or twelve years.
They're receiving the.
They capture the incremental growth from the new project going in there, but once they get past that. Well, the city doesn't get it, the county will.
Yeah, Jeff Madlam, C R County Supervisor, he can, do you want to answer that?
Well, that is exactly right, they're inside the corporate limits of Dyersville, and so they have a KIF. So they'll have to have that KIF run out before the county receives any one of the years. Well, I'd have to, the contract are all different, but I think it's twelve or fifteen years. We're not getting that money yet.
Not now, no, that'd be well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Kevin Offerman, fifteen sixty nine, twenty tenth Street. If I'm mistaken, we was getting letters from Midwest right away from Omaha, you guys wasn't, they was doing all the.
You are correct, and they were negotiating on our part, yes, yes. Yes, you are correct, thank you, very.
You are correct. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
I'd like to say something. Sir, you brought the interstates in and I'm, I'm just gonna talk from my personal experience. Have you ever brought a bird into a war zone? Cause I, I have. And, and as far as mile goes, the interstates, when they're constructed, every couple of miles, we have a mile of straight. Before wartime, for, yeah, for wartime. So, and then as far as helos like rotary wing, they, they can bring them in in the middle of the street. Like, they, they, there's, you don't, you can't bring war into this because they'll land anywhere. I've seen it, I've been on them, and it, it's, that's not a feasible argument.
Yeah, it's the national infrastructure airport plan. It's just that they want an, uh, uh, an airport of certain size and safety every thirty minutes. That's, that's their plan.
What's that?
Jack Brown.
Zach Brown.
Okay, guess me.
Star Bradley.
Yes.
Rio nine south, fourth street. Uh, I'm just, I lived here, moved away and moved back, but I lived here as a child out in the country near that airport. How is the fuel gonna affect other children playing outside and not getting sick? How is the air pollution gonna change the crops in those fields and the trees surrounding this airport? What is gonna happen to the whole air pollution of the Manchester community? Or who's gonna get sick or adults gonna get sick? What's that fuel gonna eventually do for our community?
We aren't changing our fuel. We aren't changing the fuel that's currently.
But you're adding more to bring in more planes, right?
But it's, I don't know that it means it's gonna. I, I don't, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Like, it's gonna eventually affect, there's gonna be more planes as we expand. That's more fuel being put into our air pollution. That's gonna affect the whole community.
May I say this? I don't know, but it, it's, we're extending the end of the runway or whatever, just to make it a little bit longer. But what it's basically, it's a safety enhancement. It's not an expansion.
So we can have two plants coming in the way.
Well, maybe, maybe, but, or maybe we can have more hangers filled up too. I don't know, for other people to use them. But there's other people, I mean, our hospital uses it. I mean, they've had planes refuel there. But, no, airplanes, airplane ones that have stopped.
I've been there eighteen years.
At the Manchester one?
I've been at the hospital for eighteen years.
Okay, okay.
And I fly a rotary wing.
But we have other people who stop in and refuel. Am I correct?
Yeah, actually, we just had a Mercy did a regional training at our airport. We had four or five helicopters there.
They did not refuel there.
They didn't refuel there, but they didn't need to either.
No, that's what she said.
But some people, some, some do, some do, yes, some do.
Actually, the air guard uses the airport as well.
Yep.
We've had a schnup there, numerous Blackhawks in the last month. Well, because, because the federal government wants it to be ten foot wider and.
Just because they want it doesn't mean we need it.
Okay, let's, let's get back to facts here. Okay, um, I saw, Carla, raise your hand. Yeah, go ahead.
Carla Tuckler, one, six, seven, Delhi Road.
Yeah.
I think I see both sides of this, and I think that what the FAA is generously, you know, matching to your dollar is pretty significant. And I think that's really good, but at the same time, I hear people talking about why they don't think we need it. And it just kind of brought to mind like what my dear husband says to me when we're shopping and there's a sale. And he says, just because it's a good deal, Carla, doesn't mean you really need it. So I'm trying to like.
She remembers what you said. That's wonderful.
I'm just trying to offer that, like, you know, I, I see both sides, but this is what I'm hearing. And he does let me fight back a bit.
Okay, I have it right over here.
Ron Morton, seven, eight oh four, North Franklin Street. So, um, do we know how much this is gonna cost us? Taxpayers, and is there a cost benefit analysis that is driving this decision that, you know, the benefits outweigh the costs?
We don't know what the final purchase price of the property is at this point. Until we have that final purchase price, we don't know how much it's going to cost. The federal government, the FAA will pay ninety percent of that cost. Once we have that identified, that's the reason we don't have a grant right now for this. Is because they don't want to issue the grant until we have the final numbers. Because they don't do grant amendments later on to increase the grant amount. So the process is we get the purchase, uh, they've already authorized, approved us moving through this process. And once we have purchase agreements signed, we can then apply for the grant and they will award the grant based on their purchase agreement, what the process says. So that's the point that we'll have the final numbers. What I do know is we'll get ninety percent of that cost paid for by the FAA.
I have a question. So there's no limit that the FAA will contribute to this?
There is a limit, so the purchase agreement is reviewed and approved by the FAA after we get to that point. And they, they have to have the authorization or approval. Um, when we go into negotiations and talk to the property owner, they have the ability to counter what our proposal is. With their own appraisers and their own dollar amounts and values and explain why the value is what it is. At that point, we go back to the FAA and show them what's going on, and they make the determination as to where we move forward at.
What if they determine they don't give us all the money we need?
Well, then we don't go through with the purchase.
But we're gonna vote on it tonight to have a go through, even though we don't know if they're going to actually.
We're not locked into anything at this point tonight. What we're talking about tonight is moving forward with potential for this process, this project. Uh, there are still a long time to go before we get anywhere close to being putting any payment down to doing anything that we need to.
Tim, uh, I think there's some assumptions here that are incorrect. Our, none of us want to do condemnation. We don't want to take this. We don't need the land. We need the airspace. We need to make the airport functional and follow the FAA's guidelines so we have the future possibility of growth. We want to keep the NIPPIUS status so that we're still on the list at, in Des Moines when somebody compares towns. Either to come here or to stay here. A, a, a company like Stanley Black and Decker. Or Rockwell or whoever that has multiple plants.
Excuse me, excuse me. We listen to you. You listen to Dean.
When they have a downturn, let me finish. They're looking at different towns and what their assets are, and if we don't have an airport in another town that's similar to us, does, and the labor force is, is similar. We could lose two or three hundred jobs with the stroke of a pen in a boardroom from somebody we never met. That happens because that's how economic development is, both coming and going. But let me, let me finish. We really never set out to condemn land and to take land. We want to negotiate a working relationship with the neighboring property owners so you can still plant your corn there right off to the fence row. So you can still do what you do. We're not driving you off your land. We need to go, we have been unable to sit down at the table and negotiate a working relationship where we would need much less land. To widen the runway and lengthen it. We could get it lengthened and widened without taking as much, but we haven't been able to get agreements where we can sit and talk about it and figure it out.
It's never often. I talked to Tim Beck one night at Harbridge for ten minutes, and other than that, I've never talked to a city person whatsoever.
We.
I told him that night this was leased, and he knew it. And then he buys front page of the Manchester paper and drags me through the mud, and now you want to be my friend?
Well, the city wasn't doing this negotiation. We hire an attorney that is, knows the FAA's regulations. They're doing that negotiation. Was it Tim or us?
He did, but he opened his mouth to heart ridge. He negotiated.
All right, we're not, okay, let's stop. Okay, yes.
Jan Meyer, fifteen, forty, hundred and ninety seventh street. I want to know the list of companies that are gonna come to town here if we do this. Apparently you got a list, otherwise this is a hell of an investment, just put someone on somebody.
Here's, here's an example of how that happens. I was told, Dr. Hummel that brought Animal. Animal Health International to this town, he told Donna Boss after they were here, that if he'd have known that our airport was, didn't have the capability, he wouldn't have come here.
He told her he's writing.
He. Person to person. It happened. And you see that Donna, Donna Boss is working with companies all the time that, that come and investigate and they want to come here. They want to know all these answers yesterday, and it takes them two years to make a decision. We're being compared to other communities all the time, and most people don't know that. You have to be in a position where you can put, uh, your, yourself out there and compete.
So the argument of Rachel Summers, um, eighteen twenty nine, Washington Avenue. Um, the argument was brought to the table that how we just all graduate and leave. I see dozens of people in this room that graduated from West Delaware and who are my peers in this school. So that argument is whole.
But you're talking about economical growth, like Dyersville didn't have to do anything. They have tons of new growth, tons of it. We can't even sit anywhere, sit down and eat a steak in this town. We don't even have a taco bell. What are these people flying ain't gonna do? Go swim in the water, water park? Like, they'll ride their raft down it? Is that what they're gonna come here for?
Build it.
That's what happened to them.
Fifty, fifteen, one ninety street. You guys realize there's a wetland on the end of the runway? A wetland. I don't think you can destroy that.
Do a sand pit in it?
No, no, no. It's on the east side of the end of the runway. Years ago, the city dumped rubble off the end of the runway. They did it for weeks and weeks and weeks. They pushed the creek to the north. I'm next to Todd. They backed water up into my property and Todd's when it flooded. But there is a wetland on the east side of the runway at the end. You know that?
I don't think a wetland will affect the airspace.
No, you're talking about widening the runway. In order to widen the runway, you're gonna eliminate that wetland. Tammy, am I right?
About a half acre on the south side. And there is no wetland on my property, and yes, I am permitted to have a sand pit out there if you'd like to.
Wetland on the south side of it.
Oh, I see Beth back there. All right, there was a gentleman behind you that kept raising his hand.
Birmingham, nine oh eight, East Main Street, Old Manchester sign. And I don't see they're expanding this airport and bringing in the executives gonna help my business all at all. I don't see it helping. What I see is there's a bunch of people in council trying to make decisions for all of us. We pay the taxes in this, in this city. We elect you now to work for us. I think this needs to be a city, not your bill, right? I'll admit, there's a lot of people, for every one of us, there's probably twenty five people that don't give a shit. But if they knew, if they were standing here listening to this bullshit that I'm listening to right now, they would be pissed like I'm pissed. This airport is, you know, I've been here my whole life. There ain't executives running in there, and the fact that we might lose out on business is bullshit. They're, they're gonna make their decision. There's five airports around here within an hour. But I used to cater people when I worked at ATI in the big league. I used to drive down there, fifty three minutes to see the rapids. You can bring these people in. They don't need this. This is bullshit. This is bullshit.
We don't, keep the language nice. Um, all right, so thank you, Brian. Um, anybody else?
Howard Street. I would like to know what started this? Where did this idea come from in the first place?
What started it was Bill Gerhardt approached me about my use land.
No, I mean the airport, you mean?
Yes.
The airport itself?
The expansion.
The expansion, when we became NIPPIUS, it was the airport committee. You guys want to talk to that?
How many people on the airport committee live in Manchester and pay city taxes and vote for city issues? I know Pat doesn't. I know Tears of the Island property in this town.
I do too.
Do you get a vote in this town? No, you don't live here. No, but you pay taxes here.
Gene, your husband is also.
Turn the air on or something.
Oh, yeah, you're getting really warm.
It's like eighty degrees.
It's already on. Can they open the door out there? Can you? Oh, you can't hear us still from the door. Sorry.
Anyway, this idea just came up of a sudden. The first I heard of it, I was at a council meeting where you guys were starting to push it, and council member Pointer said something about without moving forward, this town is gonna die. She's not ready for this town to die. This town has been losing a hundred people every ten year census for as long as I can remember. We were told that the Whitewater Park was gonna bring business and residents to town. I haven't seen business and residents coming to town due to the Whitewater Park, and the census proves that. So I don't think an airport's gonna do anything else either. Just cost us a whole bunch more money. I have a question for council member Sherman. A while back, the dog park committee wanted a dog park right by his property. No, he didn't want it there, so away went the dog park. Now he supports forcing people to sell land as the airport's neighbors, but he doesn't want a dog park next to his property.
I was, I was one of about thirty people that objected to that in their backyard and.
Newspaper only mentioned you.
Blocked the access to my land, and we found another location. It takes time to get it right, and I think I'm really happy with where the dog park also caused.
Okay, we're not here to talk about the dog park. Okay. Let's stay back on facts.
Well, the subject is, he's okay with saying no to a property next to him. But he's okay with saying yes to property next to the airport and forcing people to sell. That doesn't make any sense.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. We've had some people that have already, you know, let us purchase some of their land. What are we doing? How are they using those properties now?
Well, we've added on a new hangar out there. We have a new person that comes out and does aerial spraying. Uh, they have three or four planes. They run out of there, uh, four or three planes, they do keep there now, so we do have, uh, a new air, or new plane sitting out there for. That is bringing in more money for operations out there as well, uh, that's handling, you know, flights run. Well, they're doing prop dusting, prop spraying in Delaware County and surrounding areas.
Okay, but like the Francis property that we purchased in that, do they have access to their land and how do we?
We have leased back land. As a matter of fact, we have four acres south of Old Highway twenty, uh, that we lease back to Beth Todd. Uh, she, she puts hay ground on there. Um, the airspace is what was required in order for us to make sure there's nothing that's built on there that would infringe on the airspace. Whether it's planting a tree that would grow too tall, or having a tower go up, or some other building. So if we're able to control the airspace, we can lease the land back, uh, to the property owners if it's not something that's uh, going to cause an issue with our safety for the flight operations.
Yes, Beth.
My name's Beth Todd, um, and I live at two three oh eight hundred and seventy avenue. And my property is one that. We're talking about seeing this. Summers. Um, going back to the four acres that I do rent over here. Didn't originally you bought it from the Curly family and wasn't it, wasn't it domain then?
It was. We had used eminent domain in the past. Uh, there was a tree on that property that was causing issues, uh, wanted to negotiate navigation easement. Because there was not an agreement on easement, uh, the FAA required us to go through eminent domain. We went through the eminent domain. Purchased and acquired that property. We don't need the land for the airport itself. What we needed was the airspace. And then we go back and we lease back the land, and can lease the land back to property owners adjacent to it, or anybody else for that matter. Um, so they can use it, whether they want to hay crop it, um, use some livestock on there. But it's just a way for us to control, the FAA to control the airspace.
So did you try everything that were you into?
That was before my time here, but.
Wasn't before mine. We tried everything and I believe we ended up resolving it without. We tried everything and I believe we ended up resolving it without finishing the eminent domain. I believe we started it and we ended up negotiating with them. Yeah, I remember, I'm an old two, so my memory may be a little shot here. But we, it was a negotiated, uh, at the end, it was negotiated with, with the idea that eminent domain was, was eminent and probably in place, in, in process is my record.
Chris.
Chris, my daughter, eighteen eighty-three, Highway thirteen. So let me understand this right. You've conned people into selling them, selling you their land? Or you threaten them with eminent domain? And then you're gonna charge them to lease it back from you to do what they were already doing before? Does that, do I understand that right?
Not quite.
Okay.
I don't like the word conning them. It, it's negotiation, we talked about it. But the reality is, is it's controlling the airspace around the airport. So they have the proper delight slopes and proper safety clearances that they need and working with the property owner to do that. Now, the lease back is no different than farmers leasing land anywhere else.
But they already owned it.
Well.
Of course, to give it to you and then they got paid a.
They're paid, they are paid for the land. They're given that settlement, they're given that price, whatever that fair market price was. And then they can option to lease it back or the city can lease it to somebody else to continue farm operations or use it for whatever that is allowable within that district.
Okay, so in light of all of this opposition, I would like to ask the council, will you please consider a different location and starting completely over? If we have less than five years on the runway and we need new lights and we don't want, we have people that don't want to sell our house. If you came to me, I wouldn't sell you my house either. I like where I live. I put X number of thousands of dollars into the place. Sometimes not everything's for sale. So I would like to encourage all of you to please find a different location that is easily purchased for a fair price. You're not eminent domaining someone's house and their livelihood. I think that would be a suitable answer for most everybody.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the gentleman behind you because he hasn't had an opportunity.
Or let go seven hundred fifth Street. So you guys keep saying that you guys are trying to control the airspace. So you need that land to control the airspace and then you're gonna lease it back. But I guess there's a little disconnect there because you guys wanna widen it by ten feet and lengthen it by four hundred feet. So you're taking all that land, so you can't just lease that land back because you're using all of it.
Yeah.
So it's not just controlling the airspace. You are, you're still taking somebody's land. I mean, even whether you buy it or whatever, you, you're still taking up their land. So they can't just lease all that land. You guys can't just lease all that land back because it's gonna be hard to run with.
There is a percentage of that that would not be able to be used, that is correct. It's a small percentage, but it's a percentage.
More percentage than.
Right. Very small. I mean, you're talking about, uh, part of the land that we're looking at won't even have anything on it. Majority of the land won't have anything on it. It would just be the airspace.
Okay, uh, one moment, Joe.
Joel Brand sixteen twenty-five, two hundred and twentieth Street. Is there any way with the, uh, like leasing the airspace? I mean, not taking ownership like a windmill system? Or you just lease it instead of, like, if you're widening the airport runway, you have enough space to rent. But you're trying to control Offerman's land on the side of you or whatever. And Todd's, you need to extend into his. So is there any way that you can just lease the space, airspace, without taking any ownership? Will the FAA let that or FAA let that happen?
That has to be reviewed by them, but they situate or they spell out how much we actually have to physically own. The FAA will say that we have to have ownership of this. We can get an navigation easement on other portions of it. And we, we can negotiate that. That's what we've talked about with a couple of property owners already. A portion of it being an easement or the other portion is deed ownership.
Mr. McDull.
Roger.
Am I missing anybody back here? Cause my back's to you, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Here's another thing, I'm surprised God hasn't said anything. You guys already own airspace on how many acres of yours, Todd? Quite a bit. So he cannot plant a tree on his own ground. And if a tree grows, the city comes out and cuts it off.
I can dig a hole in them.
What's that?
I can dig a hole in them.
I know. And you have for a number of years.
Okay, we had a campground, that's property now for over forty, forty-five years. It's wooded, it's beautiful. We have people down there about every weekend. We do a big Fourth of July camp out. You guys want to come in and cut over half those trees down. So we'll lose our campground. You guys don't tell everybody how many trees you're gonna cut down. And they're walnut trees. You're gonna cut all these trees down just to have planes be able to fly over and land, what, two a week? Luckily, I'll have seen one come in. But that's my backyard. How would you guys like it if I came in your backyard and cut all your trees down? You know, that's our campground. We've had it forever. You know, you guys don't talk about things like that.
Thank you. Brian.
Ron Morrison. Um, so, but eminent domain is, you know, we're, we're not supporters of that. But, you know, but what's the cost? And, and you, you know, you know how it works, it's analysis. So if the cost of the ownership of the land is between four hundred thousand is the initial cost and then it's upwards of three million, it gives us some, a little bit to work with there. But then all the other costs that come into the equation, what's it cost us annually? So that's why, you know, with even small decisions, um, but big ones like this, we surely need a cost benefit analysis to see or is juice worth the squeeze? So I, I recommend that we add to a, a list of do outs, a cost benefit analysis to see what we're signing up.
Awesome, Rob. Ten oh nine North Franklin. Uh, you guys don't know how this works. So you guys pass it, it goes to court. Do you try it? No, who tries it? Do we hire an attorney through the city? Do they hire an attorney or how does that work? Yeah. Okay.
We have an attorney that understands what the federal requirements are for.
Okay, well, what happens when you lose? Does the city eat that cost? Cause it sounds like there's at least one point five million dollars in key moss, ready to be weaponized on your behest. Who eats that? Do we eat that? Or does the FAA come in and say, thanks for trying? And they give you ninety percent of this lost court fee?
It's very hard to speculate on what it'll be costing if you lose. Cause lose all condemnation tends to be, you just pay more money. You might lose altogether, they might go to prove, as Mr. Locre said, that it was not a proper purpose. But then you would lose before you had. There's different places you can lose. There's really no way for me to give you an intelligent cost of what a loss could be because you can win or lose a number of ways.
Mm-hmm. Do we have one point five million dollars to fight the dirt pile? No. Thank you.
Oh, I missed, I'm so sorry.
Joe Ditterick on Paul Southway Street. I guess I don't understand why the council's so afraid to let the city vote on the matter. We have an election in November. There's three of you guys that are up for reelection. So you guys are well aware of when the election comes. Why can't we just vote on it then? If the city wants it, we get it. City don't want it, we don't, we just leave it alone. Any?
It's not permissible election.
Aware of a way you can have a referendum on that. I've never seen it anyway.
So we don't get to vote on where our tax dollars go? So isn't that?
referendum on many things cities do. That's why you get elected officials. We have referendums on bond, bond issues and destruction issues like that. My knowledge, there simply is not a permissible way to have an election on.
On the ten percent we gotta bet. There's not way.
Not that I know of.
On Austin's question, it was a simple yes or no. Does the city have to eat the cost if they lose fighting against Todd and the rest of these guys that are gonna potentially lose their land? If they, if the city loses, the government loses on trying to take land, do we pay the bill?
Of course.
Yes or no? It doesn't matter when we lose.
Yes, it does matter. If, if, if we lose on the valuation.
If you lose today and it's ten dollars, but we lose next month and it's a million dollars, do we still pay the ten and we still pay the million at different losing points? That's the question.
And let me finish.
Let him, let him answer, please.
Yeah. We lose in the valuation determination. And we go to court and they say that the offer we made was, was insufficient. And the court determines we owe more money, the purchase price will be more. And we will have to pay that and ninety-ten split between the federal and the state. So I don't know what that more would be because I don't know what it is. We would also pay attorney fees and other, some court costs and such. And I don't know whether or not this, the federal government pays for that or not. I don't know. But it's been, on those kind of things, it would be ninety-ten. If we were to lose before we get to condemnation award, then we would be out the money because they may just have, if it was dismissed because we don't have an appropriate public purpose, that would be dismissed before we ever got through to the condemnation. So anyway, the damages, whatever they would be, we would end up, you may end up owning the property at a much higher cost and your ten percent share would be much higher, that's true. But for me to be any more accurate than that, I'm just making that number.
I just have a really quick question. Stephanie Hutchinson, Joe nine Sussex, Manchester. So this goes to court. We're just gonna say it goes to court. This goes to court and the court determines that what you offered was not enough. And now you go back to the FAA and say, okay, we didn't ask for enough. Are they gonna give you more?
At that point, before you get done with the court offer, that's when they go through the grant for the FAA. We'll have the final dollar amount.
And if they say no?
Uh, they won't.
They won't say no. They won't say no, this is too much.
Because it was decided by the court, that was the paramount.
Oh, no, I'm talking about their ninety-ten split, their grant that they're going to give you. We're expanding and all of the infrastructure that's going to take place might come to an extra five million dollars, we don't know. But you go to them and say, okay, sorry, we were wrong. We need this extra five million. We'll pay the ten percent. You guys pay the rest. What if they say no?
And that project doesn't happen.
But you still take the attorney fees.
Well, again, I'm not sure I'm following exactly where you're going with this. What project are you talking about that we go back to? Because if this has to go to court, if this goes before a judge, the judge will set what that fair market value is. That's what the FAA will have to accept. Because that was determined by the judge. The FAA reviews what we have for appraisals. They're using, they review any counter appraisal, counter proposals for proprietorship. But if it goes to front of the judge, the judge sets that price. That's what it is.
Right. But I'm saying, cause that's, that's just the, that's the base and buying the land is just the basin. You gotta have all of the infrastructure that's gonna be going in there. The extra training that you guys were talking about, all of these other things that people have been complaining about that we don't have here. And, and so that's an added cost on top of just purchasing more land. And now the FAA says, no, that's gonna be a little too much for your little town. Sorry, we're not going to do this. Now you've taken these people's land or purchased these people's land through court, appointed amount. But you can't do anything with it.
The FAA is aware of the whole plan, front to back. It's a multi-year plan that goes out in twenty years into the future, whatever. I don't know the exact timeline, but the FAA is aware of the, of the conditions we're functioning under.
I think she's talking about cost overruns on projects.
I'm sure the FAA has that happen almost every time. They're aware of what's going on and we do have some flexibility as a council as to when we do what. That's part of why this thing is drug on for more than a decade. And we've tried and tried to negotiate ways to make it work. And it's just at the point where we gotta, we've gotta finish it.
I have one more question. Right now, the city pays for one hundred percent of the airport, correct?
No.
No.
No. We'll go back to that if, if, if we fail.
We'll go back to it if you fail.
I wanna address that too. Somebody asked how this started.
I wonder.
This started because we wanted to save the city money by getting a ninety-ten match. That was the purpose of getting into the NIPPIs program. The one aspect of that though is that the FAA wants the airport minimum width to be ten feet wider, four hundred feet longer. That's it. From that point on, they pay ninety percent of everything.
So our ten percent that we are paying, can you tell me how much that is? How much is allocated to the city budget for the airport?
Aaron, you're over that up in.
If, if our purchase and infrastructure and all of that stuff ends up sixty thousand billion dollars, is there ten percent of sixty thousand billion dollars in the city budget to even? Or do you have a hundred and thirty thousand, you know?
Oh, he's looking at that up. Can I just ask one question?
Give me one second. I'm gonna let everybody kind of stand up real quick, if I wouldn't mind. I know it's getting really hot, so everybody just can't stand up and then sit, I mean, then stand, sit down again, so. Been here about an hour and a half right now. I don't know about anybody else, I gotta stand. So. Okay. All right, everybody can sit. I'm gonna let somebody else ask a question. Okay. Okay, Aaron has that number. Can everybody, five please? Thank you.
Okay, so this year for expenditures, um, we budgeted four hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and five dollars. But four hundred and twenty thousand of that was for the capital projects. So you're looking at about forty-three thousand dollars done in operational costs.
So in other words, right now we're paying forty-three thousand dollars. If you do this expansion, yes, then we have to pay ten percent. But that number's gonna multiply how many times? We don't have that money in our city budget unless you guys got money, didn't it? We don't know about.
Ron, so.
Okay, just a second. Kevin had his hand up.
I got one question. Say this doesn't go through, it doesn't pass. Are you gonna reimburse these guys for their water fees?
I don't know how it works. One second. Did you hear? No, okay.
So that, I mean, that's part of the decision. So, uh, and how many years is the agreement of the ten ninety gonna go? And after that point, is this airport gonna cost us from forty-three to now four hundred grand on a annual basis? Or, you know, is, was this a, this was a high year and the airport doesn't cost us that on a regular basis?
The, but four hundred thousand was for the potential acquisition capital improvements that are so. It runs about forty-some thousand.
On a normal year.
On a normal year, depending on how much staff time is spent out there.
Richard.
Or Robert, sorry. Roger, I can't hear, I'm so sorry, my ears are closed.
City aware that there are two and possibly three endangered species living on mine and Todd's property? Are you aware of that? Engaged. Protect.
Yes.
Can I just ask my other question? But I don't really think you got the answer. So is there a timeline on that ninety-ten agreement that the FAA is giving? Is it lifetime or is that only good for ten years or?
It depends on appropriations that historically have been ninety-ten. Back in two thousand twenty, when we got the pandemic, it was ninety-five-five. So it was better than ninety-ten for a while, but it's been historically ninety-ten.
I'm asking how long was that last? Well, is that good for ten years, for twenty years or over here?
Or does that vary?
The FAA has been running it for quite a few years, at least twenty-five years, I'm aware of. Uh, again, it's been ninety-five-five back in the pandemic times when they were trying to put stuff back in the airports.
So if we are no longer NIPPIs because we don't, I mean, if we don't expand this or not expand this, but enhance this, we don't need NIPPIs things, what happens?
Well, the FAA could drop it from the NIPPIs standards. Uh, if we close the airport, the FAA is likely to ask us for the money back that they've already provided us. Uh, and it's still the city's responsibility. It, it is maintaining existing runway, existing airport. We have people who have guilt hangers out there. It is maintaining existing runway, existing airport, we have people who have guilt hangers out there. Uh, or we turn around, I guess we could sell it as a private airport. Uh, but we still have to figure out how to pay back the FAA for what we've got.
How much? How much is that, Tim? I mean, how many years have they been contributing in this money and what's that come up to?
Yeah, I was gonna say five hundred eighty three and then there's been some special grants, so it's probably.
Or close to seven, three quarters of a million dollars.
Seven hundred thousand have given to this community. Taking a lot less, more than that away.
Yes, sir.
After all the expenses are taking out, taken out, how much income does the airport make to city? Per year, annually?
The airport is not making money at this time.
There isn't.
Revenue generation of the airport is based on fuel sales. So planes have to be able to land there and fuel up before we make money on it. We don't charge lane fees, most airports don't. We, we make money on our leases, whether it's hangar lease, uh, or farm land, land leases. That's where the income comes back into it.
It kind of falls under the same concept as county roads and interstate highways. They believe that those infrastructure things are beneficial to the community. Not everybody, you know, but, but to some aspects of it.
There's, there's five planes for six thousand people in this town.
Those aren't the only five, they use it.
And they're every, how many cars are in this town? You know, you, you're talking apples.
But you're talking one mile versus hundreds of miles. That's the other thing.
But how many people come from out of, out of Delaware County or even Iowa, come to Manchester? Yeah, airport, a lot, yeah.
No, like listen back, you're talking about one in my.
Do you have numbers?
Like, I want to know how many out of state visitors that come and stay here.
Ma'am, you didn't say your name or anything.
Sorry, Debbie Powers, one thousand four hundred.
Thank you.
So, so one aspect, just, just to kind of address that in terms of counts. Uh, the airport, we don't maintain counts, but the Iowa DOT does do account summary on. An annual basis of operations. And they calculate, I mean, on any given day, we might have two or ten. Uh, if they're crop spraying, we might have a hundred in a day. But, um, but the idea behind that is that the, the majority of the flights that Manchester has today are called VFR. Visual Flight Records, because Manchester does not have an instrument approach. The reason that Manchester doesn't have an instrument approach is because we have obstructions. Those obstructions come in the form of, of things at the end of the runway. And there are hangers that fall into that category today. Uh, there are other potential things that down the road could come into that, which is why they have the navigation easement for airspace. They want to keep a sterile area around this so that in inclement weather, in darkness, in certain conditions. Aircraft can come in and go using standard, uh, flight profiles to do it safely. So they don't slam into something that's in the way of, of the runway. And their standard for Manchester, for the minimal standard is ten feet wider, four hundred feet longer. And because we don't have that instrument approach, we don't have statistics for that. Because most corporate aircraft and business aircraft require for their insurance, an instrument approach. If they don't have it, they can't come here, they have to go somewhere else. And if I have to go somewhere else to, to do my business with the plane, I might as well put my plant there too. We're not doing this to take away your land. We're trying to do something that creates economic activity for the town, which might buy signs. It might buy corn, it might buy smints, it might buy other things, but it might produce jobs for you. We're not trying to take your land, we're trying to look at something that pays for ninety percent of what we're already doing. That might create some economic activity that employs people in this town. I, I'm just beside myself, listening to the negative. When you guys don't have the ability to see that there's some positive here. We want the town to grow, we want to see more houses, we want to see more streets. We want to see people having jobs here so they stay here and use the water park or the dog park or whatever the case may be. And that's what this is about, it's just trying to make things better. And that's one avenue, the interstate's an avenue, the county roads are an avenue, the airports an avenue. That's it.
Okay, I saw her first.
So honey, if I was you, Lomond, can you say we? Who are you talking about? Because I think you're outnumbered.
Well, it's hard to see something that doesn't exist, but, but you know, this town has the possibility to grow. And someday there might be a new opportunity here. How do you quantify that, it's not here. We're trying to create an environment where they can come. Today they can't come here. That's it.
Name please.
I'm sorry, Spencer Rayford, uh, twenty twenty six hundred forty Good Avenue. Um, sounds like, I guess from my perspective, listening to everything that's been said. There's a lot of information we could gather for independence, they have all these things. How many industries are there because of it? I think that's easy numbers to get.
Can I read a letter from Dyersville, Dyersville sent us a letter today? No. Well, I'm just trying to answer, excuse me, stop, excuse me, stop. I was asked many times, well, Dyersville's putting one up. Dyersville's, you know, why don't we just go to Dyersville? I want to read, but Mayor Jacques, Mayor Matt, well, they, they wrote us. It says, Dear Mayor Bankin, I'm writing to convey the city of Dyersville's support for the ongoing efforts to improve the Manchester Municipal Airport. We recognize the airport as an indispensable asset that benefits Manchester and plays a significant role in Dyersville's continued growth and prosperity. And we are neighbors, we work with Dyersville, Dyersville's part of Delaware County as well, portion of it is. Our two communities have long enjoyed a strong partnership exemplified by initiatives such as Field of Dreams. Which have garnered international acclaim and brought increased attention to our area. We look toward the future, we believe that investing in the expansion and enhancement of the Manchester Municipal Airport is pivotal for both of our cities. Our airport is essential, the Manchester Airport is essential entry point for people needing access to our area. We believe you can enhance the airport's safety and functionality by extending the runway and implementing instrument approach. These upgrades are crucial to ensuring the continued growth and prosperity of our residents, local businesses and communities. Furthermore, we acknowledge the commitment of the city of Manchester to pursue property acquisitions through good faith negotiations. Before considering any condemnation proceedings, and that's what we want to do. Such an approach demonstrates a genuine dedication to fostering cooperation and reaching mutual benefit solutions. As leaders of our respective communities, we must work together to strengthen our regional infrastructure and promote economic growth. The success of the Manchester Airport directly impacts Dyersville. As it provides our residents and businesses with convenient transportation options and supports our shared vision for the future. And that's Delaware County too. I'm grateful for your dedication to our region's wellbeing and commitment to this essential project. Together we can ensure that our cities continue to thrive, offering opportunities and prosperity for future generations.
Can I just clarify my statement?
Can I get your name in?
Yes. Spencer Rayford, my name is Spencer Rayford. I'm just, I'm not even on the NACER side on that, just to say, Independence, like size, they have everything at their airport that we're saying that we need. Why aren't we going over them saying, hey, what's your intake, aircraft intake? You have all the things that we're claiming we need. Those are numbers you can actually get, how many businesses claim they came there because of your airport. You know, they've had a pretty robust airport there for a long time. So why don't we gather those numbers and then, then versus these in this pamphlet?
I think the answer to that is we're way past that. We're, we're way past taking, we're way past taking, because, because we're a NIPPIUS airport. And the Federal Aviation Administration and the engineer, engineers that work with them have already done all that research. It's part of a national system. And it's, they're not, we'd be on the line to go around and take a survey and try to second guess. What the FAA is telling us we just needed in our long-term plan. You hire professionals to build the plan so you can have a professional project done right. We, we, we don't need man on the street.
I understand, I think concrete numbers that actually benefit.
The numbers are there, but.
Yes, sir.
Joe Powers, one thousand four hundred and twenty one. It sounds to me as if, um. We became a NIPPIUS airstrip before we even had the acquisition of ground. So now we're stuck trying to emanate, or condemn somebody else's property. Why did we put, like somebody said, who it was, why did we put the cart before the horse? If, if Gearheart owned that ground prior to, and he was willing to sell the ground to that, why didn't the city go, okay? Here's the amount of money to, to put it down the hole until we can get this process.
Jim, tell the story. Let's, there's a process.
Okay, but here's.
Let him finish, let him finish. You asked the question, let him finish.
Mr. Gearheart approached me four years ago, five years ago regarding purchasing his land, uh, so we could extend the runway to the north. Uh, once he approached me on that, I went and I talked to our engineers to see what we needed to do to go forward with this process. We had to go through, um, a number of surveys, archaeological survey, environmental survey. Had to go through the FAA on their airport layout plan to verify that that's what they want. The FAA tells us what, how much land that they are willing for us to acquire. Uh, Mr. Gearheart wanted some more, wants to buy more land, we went back. Um, and tried to negotiate with the FAA how much more land we could buy to square things off. Trying to go through the process, what we had, um, we got to the point where we weren't negotiating with Mr. Gearheart. And then he ended up selling it to Mr. Summers. At that point, that changed negotiations.
So why didn't the whole position get dropped? Obviously, we've had, we've got two families here that are saying this property is not for sale. We got also other people saying, well, we're not, we're not trying to take your land. Well, if it's not for sale and y'all are still trying to go after, that's taking the land. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an intelligent man. Mayor Bankin, if you came and I wanted to buy, buy your car from you, you said it's not for sale, you're not gonna sell me your car. That's the way it works.
Right.
It's the same process.
We, we use the same process, though, I think we have to kind of put a little bit into perspective that we have right of ways throughout all of town. Uh, that's the best way that I can equate it a little bit. That we have to negotiate right of ways for street wireways and stuff so that we can get utilities in and stuff like that, that we work with our property owners on and stuff like that.
Which we have in place there.
Right, right, and this was a process to go through a right of way kind of thing. Sometimes, but, but this is done through NIPPIUS because we belong to NIPPIUS, am I wrong?
Well, it was done for the funding.
For the funding, so that they could help with the funding and the grant application portion of it. But you have to do your research before you can apply for the grant.
Right, but when you go to buy a house, you put earnest money down, right?
Right.
Same concept, if you put earnest money down with this, then there should have been no problem.
We hadn't gotten to a fixed price yet.
A fixed price, but we're still negotiating price.
Then did we go through the process of NIPPIUS as we're going through the NIPPIUS or as we're going through the negotiation process?
We were, we were already in NIPPIUS prior to going into negotiations.
Okay, well, if that's the case, you didn't have the ground anywhere in NIPPIUS. So we didn't even know what we were gonna do with it once we were there anyway. So.
I think, I think there's a process. There, there is a process, we, we, again, started off in two thousand five, as Pat said. Looking at ways to get onto the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. From two thousand five to two thousand twelve, it took us that long to get through all the engineering, the studies that needed to be done. We were thinking we would need a crosswind runway at that point. The FAA says, no, you don't need a crosswind runway, you just need to extend the runway you have. Uh, we were one of the last cities in the nation to become a NIPPIUS airport.
Because they do not offer that anymore, is that correct?
They do, but very limited.
Very limited.
I think there's been like five in the last year.
Starting from that process, we started doing incremental improvements at the airport. We have done slurry seals to seal the runway for the last, we've done that twice in the last ten years. That's to extend the life of that runway. The lighting is still getting older, it needs to be replaced at some point. If you're planning to replace things, you want to plan ahead for the next fifty years, what do we do? And what are the standards that we have? And so we looked at this and said, the minimum standards for instrument approach is now sixty feet by four thousand feet. That's the minimum we want to get to, just so we can meet that low end requirement. It takes land, it takes airspace. It's difficult, that's the reason we started this process, started it with Mr. Gearheart because he approached me. Wanted purchase, we wanted to go through this as a compromise for both priorities that were interested in selling. We were able to get a couple of the landowners that were willing to sell. We have three more landowners we're working on and there's different amounts of land that needs to be done. On the south side of old twenty, we're looking at eight tenths of an acre. On the west side or the east side of the runway, we're talking about eight and a half acres. On the north side of the runway, Mr. Summers, we are looking at thirty nine point eight acres.
Which we've all heard tonight that is not for sale.
And I didn't call it for thirty nine acres, I need four hundred by sixty. That is what the FAA requires in part of their engineering requirements. So that's what, what they're telling us to acquire. That wasn't sure about from Mr. Gearheart. Yeah, it was.
Okay, somebody we haven't heard, Tim.
November one sixty, Delaware. I'm sure Dyersville does want this airport.
Yeah, well, they can't, they can't find land to put one up themselves either.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, well, and they're, 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 they kind of have the problem that we have. We're so close between Cedar Rapids, Waterloo and Dubuque. It's kind of a double edged sword for us, it's wonderful because we're so close to get to wherever we want. But it's hard to get other things to come here because that's how far they have to drive to get to them. So it, it kind of does that away from us. Dyersville is so close to Dubuque, it's easier for them to do some other things too.
It's the same distance as Independence for us.
Yeah, or Independence from Waterloo, they've got the same thing, they're closer. You know, you see as the towns expand out, Piasta used to be nothing, look at how big it's getting, so it's urban growth. Joe, yes.
So I talked to a city council member from Dyersville today, I also talked to the, the guy that runs the airport in Dyersville. And the guy, and what I got from the two of them is the city of Dyersville gives less money for the last five years straight, less money each year to the airport in Dyersville.
It's a grassland district too.
And it's just a grassland.
And it's a private.
And it's a private.
Correct, because what leads me to my next point, when I talked to the city council member from Dyersville, I asked him if they'd ever been approached. To go and make that a city airport. And I was told in twenty three years that that person had been in, in the council. They had not been approached by the community to make that a city airport.
Right.
They don't want the airport, that's why they want it here, because it's in the neighbor's yard, not their yard.
Is that all the council or just one council person?
I could only get a hold of one.
Okay.
It's really weird when you elect a council member into office, it's hard to get a hold of them. It's like somebody that owes you money, they're drunk.
Uh, gentleman back there, I've not heard from him, yes.
Steve.
I can recognize you from back there, how are you?
And a question to what Tim had said, we're going for the minimum standard is required right now. How long will that stay the minimum? I mean, fifteen years from now, are we going to be saying we gotta expand it again? I mean, I, I'm sure you don't have the answer either, but. I mean, right now we're looking at this. Where does this stop? Is in, you know, fifteen years, we need more land? So that's a question I would have, and you talked about the instrument approach, is that going to require towers?
No, no, it's all GPS.
Okay.
Virtual.
Okay, my last question would be, is you're trying to get bigger planes in, correct?
No.
Okay, because my question would be the noise.
We just want it to be safer, wider, safer, longer sleeping. Today, because there's not an instrument approach, uh, there's a certain couple of categories of aircraft that can't land here because of. They can't get insurance to land here, so they have to go somewhere else. The instrument approach and the widening and the length of the runway allows us to have the instrument approach, allows us to have that clear space. And makes it legal for us to have it, uh, those aircraft land here and be insured. Again, it's not the people that are based at Manchester, right? It's the people that are coming from other places to conduct business here, to be here.
I'm looking at a noise factor.
Yeah.
Because I, I live right across from it. I don't know if there's gonna be planes at night, all night long, you know, are there any restrictions on a timeframe?
No different than the highway. It's no different than a highway.
We don't have a highway running by us.
I do, and I will say I can hear the planes over the highway, not saying that you don't hear them. I agree with you.
They can fly over your house, whether we have an airport or not. I mean, that doesn't change that.
That's true. And, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I can't, I don't want to tell. Okay. Why doesn't, okay, so Stephanie Hutchinson, two oh nine South Fifth Street, Manchester. Why doesn't the council set this aside until the good faith negotiations have either succeeded? Or the court has made the determination, whichever route it goes, that way it's not a. Contingent on everything that goes on here. Why don't we set this aside so that the council can do what Dyersville said to do? Why don't we set this aside so that the council can do what Dyersville said to do and have the good faith of negotiations with the individuals? We have five even more years according to Tim that, and so that gives you time. There's no deadline.
The good faith thing is a two-way street. We've been trying to do this for
three years.
And we haven't been able to negotiate. And then the motion that's on the table tonight is talking about acquiring the property through gift negotiation or eminent domain. It's not a vote to do eminent domain. We don't wanna do eminent domain. We wanna negotiate a way that we can get clear airspace and keep our airport safe without. But if we can't sit at the table and do the negotiation, because the landowners won't negotiate. It's hard to blame that on the council, I think.
Yes, sir.
Aaron Hutchinson. It's kinda hard to have a good faith negotiation at this point. Um, especially when you already had, how many months ago, Tim on the radio saying they don't wanna have to use it. But they certainly will. I mean, that kind of screws that.
Roger McGoel, you talk about safety. Has there ever been a fixed wing plane have an accident on?
Yes.
When?
Uh, nineteen fifty-seven.
It was grass, wasn't it?
Actually, we had a fatality out there, uh, a few years ago as well.
Chris McGoel, eighteen eighty-three, having thirteen children, I'd like to ask questions. When you guys said we're negotiating with Gerhard, there were some studies that were done, are them not, or geological, that kind of thing? Will those need to be done again for this expansion? What were the fees for those, what, three years ago?
I don't know what the fees were. I do know that they were paid for through the FAA.
Okay, so that's not something that the city budget will have to come up with again.
We'll still have to come up with a match, uh, to go through that again. Uh, the appraisals, we've done two sets of appraisals on the properties. We'll have to be done another set of appraisals again. Due to the timeframe that the appraisals were done, they were done by independent third party. And double check by another appraisal company to verify that they were in the appropriate appraisals.
So in other words, you guys have already wrapped up how much money and thinking you're gonna go ahead with this.
Again, making sure we meet the requirements by the FAA, meet all the steps that they require us to go through.
Which is legitimate. But any idea of ballpark of what that's cost us?
Over the last five years, I can't answer that without going back through and doing the math again, going checking everything. Cause it has been a drawn out process. This isn't something where we did it one year and we had it all put together. If you're asking what the total cost was, that we've spent to date, I have to go back to and get five years worth of data to put something together.
So it sounds like a new location is a better idea all the time. By the time we do the runway and the lights and the land and the court costs and the studies that need to be done. Sounds like finding a new location is maybe a better idea.
If NIPPIUS will, again, go along with it.
Right.
And after the crap shoot.
But.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like, uh, to address a comment that I was mentioning a moment ago. Uh, when I first, Nathan Peterson. When I first made my first remarks, I indicated that the office's willingness or lack of doing this, um, to play ball here was predicated on just compensation. And I think it's important for members of the community to understand that means just compensation. Uh, is for every aspect of their loss, not just the value of the property.
Absolutely.
For access, and Mr. Sherman's concerned about, with respect to his dog park, which they would be using. It's about emotional ties as well, economic, personal. All of those things that we all value in our property, we like to exclude all of that. Uh, the previous negotiations, quote unquote negotiations, that were done through a company out of Omaha. Were fair market appraisal, quote unquote fair market previsions that were vastly undervalued. Um, frankly, they were insulted and low and didn't account for all of the relevant factors. And that's why we didn't move forward. That's why the auctions didn't move forward. Uh, because they, they, the council and, and this, uh, organization at Omaha stuck to those numbers, didn't budge. Um, and it was not a, uh, we call it good faith negotiation. So I just wanna clear the air, um, there's kind of an situation that the law would be being obstructionist and not willing to negotiate. I wanted to make sure that people was moving.
Thank you very much.
Why were none of these numbers like ready and prepared for this? Like, did nobody think that people were gonna ask those questions today?
How many numbers am I supposed to remember and memorize?
You would think that like you would print off some generic ones.
Well, again, as soon as I put a number out there, I'm held to it.
Right.
To the five years on that runway.
So you can't put a total cost and what you were gonna spend? That's magical number?
Between that position and reimbursement through the FAA, um, we're, we're probably. No, I don't want you to try to guess on that.
Can you just say roughly, we won't hold it to you?
No, no.
We will get that information for you.
Well, and really, I'm not sure that's relevant to the decision we need to make tonight. Because what we're trying to do is end some of the expenses that have been piling up year after year as we work with attorneys. And engineering, we pay engineering fees to manage that airport in France. We, we gotta, we gotta make a decision, one way or the other.
It is relevant because if you don't get this to move through, don't you have to pay some of that back?
Well, and that's where we talked about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we've fired in grants in the last five, six years.
But we've also made commitments to people that own hangars out there and people that do business out there. If we, if we, if we turn our back on that.
Some of those people do that here.
So.
So, now, I am, I agree. Got one of them out there.
I don't understand how a council member can even vote tonight. You don't, you can't answer at least fifty percent of the questions. You have no idea what the maximum amount the city's gonna spend or the FAA is willing to give. This is nuts. It doesn't make any sense. Voting on something you have no idea how high the dollar figure is gonna go.
And you can vote on this?
Just a moment. You're out of order. This gentleman first.
Jan Meyer, fifteen forty, hundred ninety-sixth Street. So I've got this clear that we don't get to vote on the airport or not. Is that correct? The people who live in Manchester?
Correct.
Right. For you guys do, right?
Correct.
But we get to vote for you guys, right? You might wanna think off that.
Name. Joe Detric, one twelve South Wayne Street. There's a lot of numbers you gotta memorize. It's understandable. But there's five council members up here that are gonna vote on this right now. Do you get to vote, Tim? Are you all of us? Just the five council members, correct? So all five of the council members that are up there right now, you don't know the numbers of what we've spent on this, you don't know what it's gonna cost us. You're not informed of what you're voting on. Am I correct or am I wrong? You guys know the numbers? That's what we wanna hear is numbers.
It's probably been close to a million dollars altogether.
But we're really not voting on a number.
No.
We're voting on the ability to move forward to steal land from people.
We're voting.
Let him finish what he was replying.
We're voting to acquire the property through gift negotiation or eminent domain. Those numbers will be determined through those three methods, whichever we can work with. We're trying to determine those numbers.
Do we have an idea of what each one of those three methods?
Not, not until we sit down and negotiate.
And appraisals are done. We don't know.
I, I don't have an idea of what the offers were sent to these people, but Delaware County's got the highest crop ground around.
Oh, I know it does. Yeah, I know it does.
We know that.
I mean, those numbers have been changing on a yearly basis. So that's why we, negotiations are taking a little longer because those numbers are changing. We're trying to work with that as well. And to keep up with that. So you're asking us to just shoot high when we don't even have the appraisal yet?
I'm with her. There's just too many unanswered questions. I don't see how you guys can vote. Don't have the numbers of how much we've already spent?
I don't know that we can even have them go through with appraisal until we do something, though, right?
Money that has already been spent, money that we've already.
They've approved the money that we've gone through, every year we've gone through this process that we have gone through with capital permits. We've talked about what the purchase price for the land was. We talked about the grants that we would be receiving. So they have done that continuously now. It has changed. The offer amounts have changed. As I said, we've done two appraisals already. Those offers have changed already with, based on those appraisals. But as you've heard tonight, there's still more negotiations go on. There's still different prices. I can't tell you what that, any price is going to be tonight, cause I don't know what that's going to be.
You, do the council members know what the last offer was on Todd's land and on, uh, sorry, I forgot their names here. The Offerman's land? Does this, does the council know what the numbers were that were offered to them?
I have those.
Did they have?
I think it was in a pack here.
Yeah, it was. I didn't bring it with me. But I can't speak to that for sure.
But that, just out of curiosity, when you start, you're talking numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Every one of us in here knows what it's like to run a checkbook.
Mm-hmm.
You guys do too. If the numbers aren't panning out on what we've already spent, what it's gonna give us and what to return investment on, it's another whitewater park. Where's the return on the whitewater park?
Wait a minute, do you remember how the whitewater park got started, where the funding came for that initially?
No.
It came from the community. The community supported that. The community raised a hundred thousand dollars to build that whitewater park. Right, you're right, it did. But it started with the community and the government to be backed it. Okay, we're not talking about the whitewater park. Okay, I'm good. This gentleman back here.
I just wanna clarify one thing going off what Dean said. So he was talking about this meetings about the land that needs to be acquired. That's what this meeting is about, is about the land, correct?
Right.
So you're, you're voting on whether you guys are either gonna buy the land or eminent domain the land. But I know, I'm not sure about these other folks, but I know Todd, just like multiple people have said, it's not for sale. They're not gonna sell it. So you're basically voting on if you're gonna eminent domain it or not.
Well, he's not gonna gift it to him?
Dean didn't wanna give his to the dog park.
Right.
Took his house made a good dog park.
Right. Okay, anything else? Okay, I wanna thank everybody. This was good dialogue. I think we all learned a lot of stuff here tonight. We, um, got some factual stuff, which is good, instead of what's been just said on the street. So we heard it from everybody. So I wanna thank you all for that tonight. Anything else in closing? Okay, because, um, after we go out of public um, hearings here, um, there will be no more talking with the public here, okay? It'll be just time for the council to discuss things, right? All right, it's seven oh four, I'm closing the public hearing. Before you, you have resolution eighty-one approving the acquisition of a necessary property interest for the twenty twenty-three airport expansion project by gift negotiation or eminent domain. I'll take a motion in a second to open it up for discussion. You will not vote until after discussion. I need a motion.
Um, for a resolution eighty-one.
For your second? I will second that. Okay, you are open for discussion.
Okay, I would like to say that I agree with Dean. I think that at this point we are basically looking still, but we need to pass this resolution so that we can look. We can't continue to negotiate with anybody or do anything without this resolution. So I don't see any place in the resolution that says we are going to do eminent domain. I don't see any place in it that says our mind is made up or we know the amount of money that we're gonna be spending, because we don't know those things yet. At the point where we do know the amount of money, then there will be a vote taken as to whether we continue. But we don't just say, eh, Tim, go spend whatever you want. That's not the way we work. We always look at the money. You people don't seem, I mean, some of you don't seem to realize that, you know, we do look at the money. We're, we're not just spending money for the fun of it. We know how much money we have, we know how much money we can spend. We know where the money can be spent, because the city has very specific rules about where money can, can be spent. They don't just hand you a bunch of money and say, here, just go spend it however you want. This money has to go to this, this money has to go to this, this money has to go to this. When we look at where we are spending money, we do it based on a budget. We set up a budget and decide whether or not we have the money to proceed with things. If we find out at the end of the day that we don't have the money to do this project, it won't be done. And I just want you all to realize that, that at this point, all we are doing is saying, we need to look further. That's what you're asking us to do. Almost every person that stood up here and spoke tonight said, look some more. Look at what you're doing. That's what this resolution does, is it allows us to look some more. But we have to have that resolution in order to look. If, if we don't pass this resolution, it's dead.
Can I ask, Mary Ann, you're talking about look some more, so we have sound figures in front of us.
I don't work without sound figures. I was a math teacher thirty-three years, folks. I look at sound figures. We always, always are looking at the budget. We're trying to decide where we can spend money, where we can spend it in the best way. This is not to say this project is going to go forward. This is to say we need to look further. That's how I read the resolution. Thank you.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
Will we lose NIPPIUS funding if we do not expand the airport?
I can't speak to that. I don't know if the FAA will pull it or not.
Yeah, I talked to Eric, the engineer, and, um, his belief is that that would demonstrate to the federal government that we are not committed to the airport and most likely that would probably terminate it. But as Tim said, it's up to them ultimately.
I was really surprised going through the airport while we were out there for the meeting and the whole, going through the logbook at the airport. How many people do fly in here for fuel? Knowing aircraft are getting newer, fancier. I am of belief that I feel safety is important. All this is looking for is safety. We need it wider, we need it longer. It will also have GPS, I guess, for landing, instrument landing. Um, everything's getting newer. Uh, my wife can't go anywhere without looking at her phone to see where her GPS is gonna take her to her phone. Eight years ago, when she had a foot phone, she couldn't do any of that. They need her upgrade. And I'm looking at this as far as the FAA is helping us. I mean, it's a ninety-ten match. To me, it's a, it's worth looking at like Mary Ann said. We don't know what the ending numbers are. But I feel we need to at least try to take advantage if we can improve the safety, improve the airport. And get a ninety percent grant. I feel it's worth looking at.
And we're not looking at just how it's affecting the, the community in Manchester, Delaware County today. We're also considering how is this going to impact us five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty years down the road. So that's something that when we're looking at this, or I'm looking at this, I'm also looking into as well. It's not just today's numbers or today's, how is it affecting us now, how it's going to impact us down the road.
I think I said enough.
Do you have anything?
I don't think our numbers are clear enough.
And so how do you want to go back?
So what I'm saying, and, and I agree, our numbers are not clear enough. What I'm saying is what this resolution does is allow us to get those numbers. That's what we want. Yeah, I'm, I'm a firm believer that we need those.
I think this ninety-ten match, if we have to pay a hundred million for his property, then we're gonna have to attend. I think this ninety-ten match, if we have to pay a hundred million for his property, then we're gonna have to, or ten, a lot of money to come out and save.
And we could have them decide not to do it, is that correct? I just want to make sure I have all the information for everybody before.
What this resolution does, authorizes us to start proceedings, go down there, there are still a number of other votes that would have to come up. Once we get to a purchase agreement amount, that comes back to the council for review and approval. Once we get to, uh, grant agreements, that still comes back to the council for approval. Um, if we have to go, the next step, that comes back to the council for review and approval. So this is just stating that this project is a necessity, uh, and we are interested in moving forward with this project.
Joe, I'm gonna pick on you for a second. Do you know how many times we have to slow down what we do, because there are rules to follow? These are the rules we follow, I mean, do you, would you agree with me that it's not always smooth sailing, we can't make one res- resolution and it's all gone? It, it doesn't work that way, does it? How many times do we have to vote on something, how many times do we have to look at something, you know, so, yeah, I agree with Tim, it's, it's far from.
But it's the council doing its due diligence to make sure it has all the proper numbers, and they know all this stuff, plus it gives the NIPPIAS people time to even say, this isn't worth it either. I would rather have them come back and tell us, we're not doing this, and we have to come up with a different thing than us. Because hopefully there'll be funding still there for us, in case we have to. Maybe that's a wrong assumption, I don't know. But I don't want that to happen, I don't know.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Yeah.
Dyrus runs Iona Grass Airport, how can the federal government not send, we need lights on this business?
It's a private airport.
It's a private.
Technically, you can't really land there unless you have permission.
Any other questions? I had a motion, I lost my piece of paper, I had this written in my notes, so, yeah, I got it right here. Okay. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tanya? Yes. Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Nope.
Bill?
Yes.
All right. Next item, we are opening a public hearing on the application for voluntary annexation. Um, this is for Joe Hill Grant's property, it's seven thirteen, I'm opening the public hearing. Oh, Joe, Joe, oh yeah, you can go ahead.
Tammy, Ivy, thirteen ninety-seven, two hundred and twenty-first Street. I have nothing against Joe developing this into condos, but as I listened to this, all about the property rights and things like that, my husband and I have a century farm, it's a hundred and two years, we've been, my husband's family has had that. And I'm just kind of disappointed about how this development came about, you're talking about bringing businesses in. You know, we were always prepared that our ground in the around south of us is gonna be developed in the industry. And Tim told me when I asked him a question about it, we need housing in Manchester, with right or wrong, but you've not landlocked here by putting Joe's development with, you know, we need the housing. I'm not against how Joe's developing, but the way you're landlining now the industrial park on the south side, the east side of thirteen, and you're talking about expanding, bringing industry in, are you gonna have mixed use there then? These condos, and then to the north, all around it, industrial at some point? I sat in here in one meeting, and I'm listed as light industrial commercial on our property, you know, as the goal. I asked if I could attend those planning and zoning meeting last week, and I was told it wasn't open to the public. I was told by one of the people in the committee. And, because I asked if I could come just to listen, because I'm not against what Joe's doing, because, you know.
Yeah, because it's open.
I probably have the text messages on my phone.
We'll talk after this if you want.
I'm just disappointed about, with the county and the city, um, and the annexation request, that we weren't even notified as a landowner, that this was going obvious, I can see, I drive by Joe's place every day of my life, you know, multiple times coming into the city, and I don't have a problem with Joe or what he's doing, but the, the city could at least acknowledge us as landowners directly to the west, because we, we put our cattle out there, we crop it normally. We didn't spread the mower out there, and I, Joe, I haven't gone back there, but Chris filled the waterway, and he didn't know how far set back from the fence it is. But I worked for the government for thirty-seven years, I know all the, you know, nuisance laws that are gonna go on, and this might affect our farming operation, just because of the housing going there. And it's just interesting that when you guys are deciding eminent domain, or not eminent domain, but, you know, annexing that into the city, it was one thing that was Casey's property here, Spiegel's development. If I want to put anything up on our farm, I have to come and get permission from the city, because I'm in two and a half miles, but you guys weren't even courteous enough to send me a notice that we were gonna get annexation right to our east, or our west fence. I'm glad Joe's putting this out there, because we need more, the housing like he's putting up there, but I'm just disappointed in how the process works as us as being landowners.
So, I know, like, if there's, I, I'm not, this is the first time I've ever been part of the annexation, I think. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming.
The state sets out a specific. And, and we're required to notify, uh, the county board supervisors when it's a voluntary annexation, but there is no requirement to notify the joint.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I think there's something different for cities. I'm gonna, just one minute while everybody leaves, we're gonna let everybody leave so we can hear each other. All right, go ahead, Tammy.
Well, you know, it's, well, it's buzzed on agriculture up until, you know, a little bit, and there might be some commercial there now, because, you know, as building sites increase, and those fields across, you know, to the south of there, but, you know, we didn't go to the county, didn't have any permits to go to, pass that to be rezoned to ag apart from ag, or whatever it is, to residential, and then it's just directly to you guys to annex it. So, I, I just feel disappointed in the process, but you don't have something in place to notify landowners? You know, next is gonna be, you're coming. No, I'm not saying Joe hadn't notified me, but the city should have had in their process.
Okay, what did you say, Erin, you said that the thing, it was loud when they were off on that?
Um, the, the state code requires with the voluntary annexation, that a notice is published in a paper, and then sent to the county board supervisors.
Yeah, and I, I don't get the Manchester press, the only thing I got was, you know, seeing this go up, and then, that's, well, no, Joe didn't come to, you know.
I didn't come to him, I guess I didn't.
It's like, right along our fence, I, like I said, I haven't been back there to measure, you know, and I'm not gonna cross the fence to invade Joe's, you know, land, he owns it, but that fence line, you go west of there, and we have an active farm, you know, we have cattle, we have, you know, our cabin, if anybody's been back there, our cabin's there. You know, those houses are gonna look right there.
There everybody, I mean, I guess I'm not, I mean.
Name and address, please, yeah.
Joe Hill, the Grant sixteen twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-first Street. Yeah, I, I guess neighborly wise, I, I guess I'm terrible that way, I'm just one guy that it's, uh, it's my land, and, and I guess I went about, and I did contact county, I went through everything that's gone through, and which Mary Ann is pointing to me, I just run with it. Uh, as far as anything towards your land, anybody, the, the people that are purchasing the condos, I explain to them all the time, that's a century farm, there will never be nothing back there. You'll probably see some cows in there, they cornered a bean it, and, you know, I explain, explain what it is. Um, I've met with the county, Jeff Madlum, and, uh, his guy that runs that area. I follow everything, we're not annexed into the city, I follow all the rules of the city, I have Tim Heinz come out and inspect everything like I am in the city. Our fence line, we are back, we, uh, we're putting, uh, we're seeding the banks down, um, we're putting tile in. And no different when I purchased the property prior, I, there's Chris, I let Chris hook on when I tiled it, come up and tiled into your corner to help that, which all drained to Highway thirteen. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm probably one of the worst guys to go ask if I can do something on my own land, I, I'll admit that, I, I'm that guy. Um, I'm not doing nothing to jeopardize anything, you guys, I respect what you're doing, and I tell everybody, what's going on, I don't, I don't hide nothing, I'm straightforward about it.
Yeah, but, and I'm not having problems with Joe and his development. I'm just disappointed about, you know, you can say it's published in the Manchester paper, but I don't get the Manchester press, and, you know, I go online.
I, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, so, does the supervisors, do you have anything in your thing that you send it out to the property owners around there when you know an annexation?
No, because it's the city annexing in, so, just like you sent us a letter, uh, we don't, we don't notify anyone, except Joe's right, I was out there with him, he followed all our rules, uh, anything we asked him to do. He explained that it was gonna be temporary on the county's part, because he was going to hook on to city water and city sewer. So we accommodated him as long as he followed our specs, but as far as notifying anyone, no.
Well, but you do have a notification after changing the land use, so if it was then stayed in, if it would have stayed county, and it would have changed from ag to, you know, real estate out there.
If we change zoning, we would notify too.
You know.
If we change the zoning classification, we do have to notify twenty.
So, so it's ag, but you're annexing it as real, or as, uh, housing now, so I probably wouldn't get notified then, because it's already been.
It's part of the annexation process. But I do think, Tammy, I think that's a good point, I think that's a step you could add.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
It's just disappointing, because, like I said, you know, you, you know, when I annexed the other part, you know, when Joe wasn't building this, he had to get permission to put up his shop, we had to get permission to upgrade our shop, you know, because we were within that two and a half miles. Yeah, we have to, or the.
We were, we were, uh, county, so, when I did my shop, no.
We had to get, you know, permission, so.
The, the rule with the county just started.
Yeah, they just started having their ordinances, yeah. Yeah, no, that's, I think that's a wonderful point you've brought up, because that's, I think we should do that in the future, yeah. So I'm very sorry, but, yeah.
Like I said, I'm not hitting the rail on Joe, because I'm not against it, it's just, you know, if, you know, you go by, gone on vacation, go by, and I'm like, oh, Joe's building another, another shop. And I'm like, well, that's where now it's got branch doors and it's got roof, and so I started checking around, and I'm like, you know.
Right, because, but it's because you came to this meeting and was willing to talk to us, that we can make these changes, or we can look to make things, do things a bit different in the future.
Followed the state code, and most towns don't have this, and I got a feeling after tonight, they're gonna tell me to draft an ordinance. And I think that's why, I mean, your company brought that, they didn't do anything different than they do other cities.
No, just another procedure that you can take.
Start thinking about that, because, you know, you're starting to get.
Great, I'll get you in just a second.
You know, this, you know, if you start making it, um, like, family housing over there, you have to start thinking, your planning and zoning community is gonna have to get a plan, because you landlocked your industrial park, which you wanted to expand so you can use the airport, so.
If I could jump in, I mean, I guess, now, a lot of people was, you know, you're, you're saying the council people and stuff, now, I've been in a lot of meetings, Donna Boss has put me in touch with a lot of people that want to come to this town, and business-wise, and, you know, I always thought years ago, just like anybody else, that, hey, these, these guys aren't doing their jobs, you know, they're, they're not doing it, it's easy. I'll tell you this here, it's not easy, it's not easy one bit, I mean, I've been in meetings with Donna, and I'm throwing the whole plate at these businesses, I mean, just, you give them everything, we offered to move equipment out of my shop so they could have temporary shop to run for a year, while we built the building, and you still don't get the deal. And I was always intent, my first idea when I started buying the land from Ullahan, was like Manchester Enterprise, to me, they weren't never doing their job, so I'm gonna build some buildings, and I'm gonna lease some out, you know, and, and, uh, that was my first initial. And then, when I started dealing with XL trailers on the high plant and the other buildings, that's when they all were coming to me, Strighton, XL, I mean, uh, Black and Decker, I know, were all contacting me to build housing and housing. I didn't, and I wanted to go with, uh, I stick with the HOA, homeowners association, so I can control what's getting built there, that it's always gonna be taken care of. The grass is gonna be mowed, everything, it's all kind of rules to it, to control everything. Um, yeah, it's not as easy as everybody thinks it is, I mean, you can, you can blame them till you're blue in the face, but it's fact.
Yeah, let's bring it back. Um, so, but no, um, you had something you wanted to say.
Silvergans nine fifteen Sherman Avenue, you guys have known, you guys have an issue with communication with everyone in the town, because you guys were going to close the street down for parking, and the only way I knew was by calling, because you guys had posted signs. You guys have known, I have, I, I take a crap, and I have to get permit, it seems like in this town. You guys have to let us know when you guys are doing, especially, son, I'm paying taxes on energy, I'm in the same boat with her. I'm frustrated with your guys' communication, you guys say Facebook, newspaper, nobody buys a newspaper anymore, it's gone down drastically.
Started videotaping the meetings for everybody to be able to watch.
Don't have Facebook, what do you do?
Well, you go to YouTube, it's on YouTube, and it's on the city web, and it's, it's on, well.
What would you suggest?
Then what, what, yeah.
Send a letter in the mail.
To everybody?
To the people that it's going to affect.
How do we know who those people are?
I'm right on the street, I would contact every homeowner on that street, there's four of us.
Yeah, well, and what we found out is, it's, it's something that's not, we did what we were supposed to do according to the law.
But there needs to be more.
There needs to be more, that's what we're going to try to address in the future.
And I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I agree with her.
I'm frustrated with you guys a lot of times, because I've not.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jeff Penny, twenty-two oh five, one hundred and thirty thousand. This little thing in the paper like that, don't get it. It's something that you guys put in there and say, but there ain't nobody else that can.
We're getting way out of the subject here, let's get back to Joe's business that we're trying to get done tonight, that's what this public.
So, is there anything else in public hearing, besides that portion, or?
I apologize to Joe, because I'm not putting him on the spot, because he doesn't have to tell me what's going on out there, but I was disappointed that if you're going as big as an annexation, you really need to start thinking about which direction, you know, to start notifying landowners that might have issues with that.
Agreed.
He might be next to it.
Right, agreed, and we're gonna try to rectify that, so thank you.
Can I add one thing, something to think on that?
Name and others, please.
Sorry, Chris McDull, eighteen eighty-three, Halle thirteen, is it something that the council should be thinking of, of getting the council mother from somewhere in that two-mile jurisdiction?
We'd have to change.
We don't have elected officials or within the city.
City limits.
It's in city limits.
Yeah.
But yet, those of us that live within the two miles, we don't get our voice.
Yeah, don't care, tax.
We don't regulate the two miles with anything but subdivisions, right?
Subdivisions only, yeah.
Just splitting property.
I just wondered if that was something that maybe we should look at down the road.
And we kind of did that, some of that was also because the county did not have a county ordinance until.
It wasn't county zoning until recent.
Until recently, just January, yeah, just January first of this past year, yeah. Okay, any other things regarding this property? All right, it's seven twenty, I'm going to close the public hearing. Before you, I have, um, resolution eighty-two approving the application for voluntary annexation, annexing certain real estate properties to the city of Manchester, I need a motion, and then a second, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion. Or the other way around?
You go first.
No, you go.
I'm just gonna write somebody down. All right. It's open for discussion.
I think the one thing needs to be pointed out, she mentioned the industrial impact that your project has, it's gonna be great to get that water sewer, that sewer line across there, so the industrial park can expand, eventually, there may be a street come through there that will help access to our industrial park, that's a huge part of what you're doing, that isn't even in what we're talking about tonight.
Anything else? Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, made you wait, wait even longer tonight, sorry, Joe. All right, next we have engineering updates, do we have any? Oh, shoot, so we've done that part. Okay, here we are, my computer isn't working, so I apologize, people. All right, um, regular, I need a motion, uh, to approve resolution eighty-three, and that's approving the preliminary and final plat for the West Side Estates subdivision.
Two of, second.
Oh, there we go.
I'm trying to help you out, Joe, and move this along.
Any other discussion?
I I just got, I was handling it, Joe, I just got a quick, does there say marks?
Well, we're talking about along the the main road that goes in there is Earlene Way, so I don't know the thing, but we're talking, Jason and I, which we've talked to you guys about, is putting like a bike trail along the Earlene Way down on the right-hand side where it get into the bigger area right there. Otherwise, you get the two cul-de-sacs.
Just ask.
Because that was brought up at PNC, too. All right, anything else? Tanya. Yes, Mary Ann.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Linda. Yes, Dean.
Yes.
Okay, next, Resolution eighty-four, it's setting a date of meeting at which is proposed to approve a development agreement with Joe Hildebrand and Eastern Iowa Pump. Do we have a date for that?
It'll be October night, but next regular council meeting.
Right here, motion? Yes.
I'll second it.
Andy. Yes, Dean.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes, Bill.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Okay. That's all of them, correct?
No.
One of our resolution approving, oh, there it is. Resolution eighty-five, it's approving the engineering agreement with Burlington Group for the West Marion Street sanitary sewer lateral project. Need to speak to that?
Basically, what we're trying to do is extend the sanitary sewer under West Marion Street from where the lift station is to the south side where West Shulte is planning to build up a couple more twelveplex apartments. This will provide sewer to them and all area up for that development.
You have any questions on that? I need a motion and a second.
I'll make that.
Dean.
Yes.
Linda. Bill.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
And that is the regular agenda items. Do we have any engineers? Randy's here. And, oh, we get to talk to Jason. He's deferring to Jason.
Well, we just waited.
You can come in and have a seat.
No, we're just continuing to work with the board on the Grand Avenue discussions up there. But other than that, there's no other, no other updates for council this evening.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have anybody preferred, Ryan?
You left.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I think the city's going to email.
Okay, Sam will send us. Okay. Okay, perfect. Jim.
I will very welcome to say I have nothing to.
Thank you. Tim.
Our next committee, the whole meeting will be at four fifteen. At the city shop, we will be down at the city shop, have our meeting and take a tour of this shop facility.
And that is October seventh.
And that is open to the public.
I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't get toward that.
That's a committee, the whole meeting, council and department heads will sit down, go over what's going on in the different departments at the time, what major projects coming up. We will be meeting at the city shop area, you know, where that's.
There is no action taken at the committee meetings. It's just an opportunity update on projects and what's going on, but they are public meetings.
Yeah. And they'll be giving us a tour of the facilities. Okay. Thanks. Aaron.
Nothing.
Bill.
Uh, nothing. I, one thing I will back up real quick. I am glad to see we got the grant for the police department for that.
Yeah.
Speed sites. I I I liked the one I know, Frank.
Where did they move it? Acre Street by the school.
I would tell you that one.
They, that's, they moved it from there down to North Franklin for the summer, and then they moved it back. These two new sites will be placed on North Franklin Street between Butler and. What is it, Lara? So those will remain on North Franklin.
And just to note on those, those are being paid for from funds raised by that Back the Blue event that was held in August, so.
Yeah, good deal.
Great amount of funds raised by that group.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann. Tanya.
Thanks for being at the meeting at four fifteen.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Dean.
Nothing.
Linda. We all were at the Iowa League of Cities meetings, and I think everybody found some really interesting things to go to. And I thank everybody for attending those. Real quick, Jean, you want to say something?
Could you put the, that sign up on, or that speed thing on Sealy Street for a couple of weeks?
There's several streets. There's several streets that are like that, so.
I would take it on our, right, what is my yard?
I will tell you, though, that we are, they are not taking speed limits on that. They are not writing tickets for that, just so you all know that. So everybody's know that. The one last thing, thank you, Mary Ann, is today I am declaring a year of kindness. We just need it. So today was a good example of everybody, everybody being able to sit down and talk about the facts and civilly and and learning from each other. I hope everybody found it that because it was a learning experience, I think, for everybody. And so we're all neighbors, we're all friends. We're going to be every month having something to concentrate on. October first, it starts neighbors. Appreciate your neighbors. I'll have one for, you know, our support staff, just takes care of our city or public works, our hospitals, people, our teachers, our seniors, our veterans, and so forth. There'll be something every month, so pay attention to that. But I just, you know, we don't always agree on things. We want to try to find a middle ground on everything. And just have to understand we're all kind of walking in each other's shoes and put ourselves in each other's shoes while we're doing things and while we're moving forward. So I thank you all for tonight. I got a motion from Councilmember Schmatt and from Sherman, second. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night, everybody.